I'd like to call to order the November 20th, 2018, meeting of the Buncombe County Commission. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise and join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
All right, good evening. Please, if you've got your cellphone with you, please turn it off or put it on mute. I'd also like to announce that we have parking validation and bus passes available for any folks who have used the county parking deck to attend this meeting. The security, law enforcement personnel with us can give you validation for the parking pass, or if you use public transit to get here, they'll give you validation for that as well. So feel free to ask them about that on your way out. With our meeting this week, just before the Thanksgiving holiday, I thought it would begin this meeting by asking each of our commissioners to share something that they are thankful for before our meeting. So I'm going to start over on this side with Commissioner Fryer, and we'll just go down and love to hear folks say a few words about things we have. We have a lot of things to be thankful for in Buncombe County, and so I'd invite you to just share a word.
I'm thankful for what we try to do here. Try. Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't. But I'm thankful for the people of Buncombe County, all the people. Without y'all, we're nothing. You know, we try to listen, sometimes we make mistakes, sometimes everything works out good. But the fact is, we're here for you, or I am for you, and for the people that work for Buncombe County, the 1,500 employees that we have here that we're very proud of, or I'm very proud of. You know, we're losing a member tonight. This is our last meeting, and we've been here six years together. Her name was Wanda? No. Her name was Ellen Frost, excuse me.
Okay, next.
No. I spent too much time there. But anyway, there is some, we've had our ups, we've had our downs. We're from different parties, but we tried to work out situations through the years, and six years is a long time, you know. So, but she has made a decision on her own that she's going to walk away. We have a new board member coming in, but, you know, we all got to be thankful, including her, that we have and are having the opportunity to work for all of you. This is the fullest I've seen this room in a long time, and that's what we supposedly should have, is the people coming to us and telling us what they're looking at. And that's, you know, and we have staff in here that can hear the same things that we're saying. But, you know, God knows that, you know, people in California, the people that's lost in fires, people of this and that. Buncombe County, we've had some rains and stuff, and we've had some rough times. But we're going to make it all work out, and I thank everybody for giving us the opportunity, not just me, us the opportunity to do this. Thank you.
Okay, you've embarrassed yourself enough, Fryer. I'm very thankful for my family and my four beautiful grandchildren, that that is part of why I want to be a county commissioner, is to look for the future of Buncombe County. Also, bringing transparency, I'm very thankful that we're going to bring transparency back to our county employees and let them spread the word out to the public that we are doing the best, that we can. And last, I'm thankful that I get to do this four more years. I thank everyone that voted me in, that I can help this county and help you, help my family and everyone, make this a great place to continue living.
I'm going to echo what my two colleagues have said and just express how grateful I am for this community. Every single day of every single week, I get to hear incredible stories from across our community. Last week, there was a chance to visit some county schools and just see the extraordinary work happening there. I think each of us could probably talk for hours about how inspired we are by the passion and creativity and big heart of Buncombe County, and I feel grateful for that every day. I feel blessed and honored to be in this role. And I was saying to a friend the other day who was just asking how things on county commission were going, and you can answer that question a lot of different ways, but what came to my mind first was that it really is an honor every day to serve with this group of folks and learn from people and figure out what it means to be friends and colleagues when you don't agree on everything, but you also can find ways to agree on things and sometimes be surprised by that, and that's a pretty great feeling. So those are some of the things. Also, my family's growing. We're having twins in January. We have a little four-year-old at home, so I feel grateful for the health of my wife and our babies as they grow, and in for a very wild ride ahead. Thank you.
All right. Well, I will also just say that I'm very thankful for, I feel very thankful to, for all the different people in our community who contribute to public service in our community in all the different ways that they do, you know, to the folks who I get to serve with up here. Congratulations to Mr. Presley on his reelection, and the other great folks who have stepped forward to serve. And, you know, the first couple of times I ran for office, I did not get elected. It's, I've learned that it's more fun when you win than when you don't win, but, you know, you learn a lot from it either way. And so I want to say thanks to all the people who put themselves forward, especially those who didn't win, but who did it anyway, and who I know will continue to be involved in the community in a lot of different positive ways. To all our public staff who run this operation day in and day out, we thank you. None of this would happen without you. To the folks who have served before, I see Commissioner, former Chairman Nathan Ramsey with us. Appreciate the service of everyone who's worked here before and continues to contribute to our community in so many, in so many great ways.
So I want to try to echo some of the feelings of the commissioners, but I want to give you what I'm thankful for personally, and then I'll share with you what I'm thankful for on a commission level. The first thing I'm thankful for is my relationship with my Lord and my heavenly Father. And secondly, is my bride of 43 years, and she was my first date, and so I'm one of those stories where I've been one. We've been together for a lifetime, and it usually gets an awe from some of the ladies in the room. And then my son, Joseph, my daughter, Leslie, my son-in-law, Nathaniel, and daughter-in-law, Haley, and I have three grandchildren, A.J., Fern, and Kayden. And if you follow me on Instagram, you know that my grandchildren are internet sensations and beautiful children, and as, Robert's got girls coming out his ears, so I don't know how, you know, he's going to be able to, I don't know how you're going to be able to afford all those grandbabies, but anyhow, they're beautiful. And I'm very grateful and blessed to serve, and I'm thankful for some of the new positions, some of those people that have stepped up and taken positions of leadership in the county. You know, we've met some new ones and some that have worked here for a while have stepped into positions, and I'm grateful for their leadership. Thankful for the commissioners that I serve with. In six years, I think this is the fifth makeup of the board, maybe fourth. And the current board, though, we are, we are different in a lot of ways, and if you want diversity in your government, you got it right here, because we are different. But we come, you know, most of the things that we disagree on, you know, we don't vote on those things. We're doing business, so I'm thankful for the way we do that and the way we've kept, tried to keep a lot of those controversial things off of the board and just done business. And I'm grateful for the opportunity that I've had to serve with Ellen. We haven't agreed on everything, but she's been a good friend, and she's been solid in that friendship and her, you know, her concern for my children and grandchildren, and I appreciate that, and I share that with her, and I'm grateful for the time that I've had to serve with her too. So, but it's good to see a room full, and it is, is it warm in here, or is it me?
Like hotter than Haiti?
It is, it is.
It's fine.
No, it's not. It's actually not hotter than Haiti's, but it is pretty hot in here. But, and I have to quit because Chairman limited me to 20 minutes, and being the good Baptist that I am, if I speak longer than that, I got to take up an offering, so we're not going to do that. So.
I thought I was long-winded until I started working with these folks.
That's exactly right.
No, I'm thankful for a lot. First of all, for my family and for my lovely wife who put up with me for almost 40 years. Wait, take it back. Lord, I hope she's not looking at this. Almost 50 years.
It is being recorded.
Yeah, yeah, it's being recorded.
That's your anniversary date.
July 25th, 1970. I did remember that. But I am for my family, my daughters, two daughters, two grandsons, three grandsons and son-in-law, so it's all great. I'm fortunate there with the family. We have 18 of my relatives for dinner Thursday.
Oh, dear Lord.
And the only thing I'll be fixing is running my mouth, so, you know, it's up to Cheryl and the girls. And most of all, I think, too, I want to thank the community, because I've just finished up my first two years on the commission, and it's really been a pleasure working with the people of Buncombe County, not only in my district, but all over the county. And I think for me, it's like reacquainting myself with a lot of old friends, because a lot of people in this county are former customers of mine, the 40 years I spent in banking here. So that's been a pleasure. And the county employees. I'll tell you what, the 1,500 county and plus employees that we have are good people, competent people, loyal, dedicated. Unfortunately, over the last few months, just one has tarnished all of us, really. But we cannot forget our employees who put every day, they put 100% plus into Buncombe County and making life good for all of us. And when we also, the commissioners here, it's been great working with them. As some have said, I've enjoyed it and will continue to enjoy it, and we will miss Ellen, especially because if I say something wrong, she'll either kick me or punch me, you know. I'll miss that part. And two, I want to thank the community and especially people in District One for giving me four more years on the commission to work with you, even though some say it was a hard-fought election. It's hard for me to say that when there's nobody running against me. But it has been a pleasure this last two years, and I look forward to the next four.
And Ellen, before you go, I do want to, as other folks have, I do want to acknowledge that this is Commissioner Frost's last meeting with us in Buncombe County, and as folks have said, she has served the county for six years.
Yep.
So we want to express our thanks to you, Ellen, and there's going to be a reception immediately following this meeting in the conference room right out this door. And we've got some cake, and so if you'd like to stop by and say a few words of thanks to Commissioner Frost, you are welcome to do so. Yes, sir.
May I ask you?
Yes, sir.
I forgot a few things in mind.
Okay, go ahead.
Better known as my wife, for 46 years, Brenda, and my daughter, Melissa, and Kristy, and my grandson, Ian. Yeah, I work hard, you know, and I respect them, but that's, I needed to get that in because everybody else was there.
Yeah.
Thank you for, oh, and one more thing. Thank everybody for bringing George to us. He's been, I understand now what a county manager's supposed to be, and that's the one thing that I've learned since I've been here. It took six years to get there, but George, thank you.
I'm going to jump in quickly. I thought we were doing a two-step here, but I certainly want to just acknowledge, and I think many people in the room are here, to acknowledge and say thank you to Commissioner Ellen Frost for her years of service, and want to especially lift up some of the initiatives that she has been a visionary around, and I think just brought such extraordinary heart and compassion in her leadership around, specifically the Isaac Coleman Grants Initiative, which I see as one of the most significant bodies of work underway in our community right now. So Ellen, we wish you so much joy in this next chapter, and your presence will continue to be felt here, and I have learned a great deal from you during my first two years here. So I hope your heart will be full this evening and that you will feel the appreciation and gratitude here, but also here and in the many, many lives that have been touched by the work that you've helped lead.
It has been the greatest honor to serve this county. On a personal level, what has always driven me is my daughter and granddaughter, and they're both very privileged, and they both have been given a lot, and it was my hope to play in a small role, that everybody could be given the advantages and benefits that they have. And for this commission, somebody said in 2008 that people can come from different backgrounds, share different beliefs, but if they have a common heart, they can move things forward. And Commissioner Fryer and I, I don't think it's a mistake that he's on the extreme right and I'm on the extreme left, but there are many things that we agree on. We agree on the welfare of Buncombe County citizens, but we have a unique relationship that came from lots of talk, lots of disagreement, lots of agreement, but really it came from a tremendous amount of respect. He could say to me, "What do you think about this?", and I could say, "That's crazy. I can't go for that", and he stops. And likewise, and I hope we've done that, but with everybody on this board, you know, it's just been full of conversation. I mean, we're doing something on this board that's not being done anywhere. We're doing bipartisan work. When I think of the bipartisan votes that we've had, the Family Justice Center building three schools, Isaac Coleman, the Justice Resource Center, and I could go on and on, but these were 7-0 votes, and they didn't come by chance, they came from lots of conversation, deep understanding of issues, and lots of conversation. And everybody on this board put so much time and effort and conversation. And Joe, we started out on MSD together, and I'll still remember the big truck. But it's been a pleasure of my life, and my granddaughter is a junior in high school, and I intend to spend this next year and a half with her, enjoying her, my business, and most, I'm grateful for them, my family, and, but I have extraordinary friends that have become family. And what this commission has done, through the votes they've had, is made it so that everybody in Buncombe County is beginning to feel that they have a seat at the table, and they have a seat and speak up and come to this boardroom. When we've had full boardrooms like this, it's to advocate yes for libraries, yes for equity, yes for jobs, and I think it's incredible, this place the citizens have, and I think we're so lucky to be in a community where citizens care so deeply. So keep speaking up, and thank you again. It's been a tremendous honor.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to move on. I'm going to read the ethics reminder to the board. Is there any item on the agenda, the outcome of which will have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Does any board member have a financial interest in any public contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters the board votes on this evening. Any, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? Great. All right. The next item up on our agenda is, under good news, is we would like to recognize Kristy Cheek, who has served the Buncombe County Schools for many years. Ms. Cheek, if you would please join us at the podium.
Proclamation. Proclamation honoring Kristy Cheek. Whereas Kristy Cheek has been employed for over 31 years as an educator with the Buncombe County Schools, as a classroom teacher, career in technical education coordinator, and career in technical education correction. And whereas, she has left a positive mark on every person and program she has worked with, including students, teachers, employers, public officials, and others, and whereas, Ms. Cheek's classroom experience...
Thank you. Whereas Ms. Cheek's classroom experience of 24 years was marked by a deep love and concern to see her students grow and experience real-life business opportunities. And whereas Ms. Cheek's efforts have led to many students finding, fulfilling, and rewarding career and educational opportunities in our local community. And whereas Ms. Cheek has developed strong partnerships in the business community and has been able to involve employers in the student's educational experience. And whereas Ms. Cheek has been recognized throughout the state for her leadership in career in technical education, including being recognized as a national finalist to the ACTE Leadership Award. And whereas Ms. Cheek has been a passionate advocate for her students' access to the academic, technical, and workplace skills that they need to be successful. And whereas Ms. Cheek has helped tens of thousands of students experience local workplaces through Students at Work, Manufacturing Week, Manufacturing Day, AB Tech Summer Camps, and other efforts. And whereas Ms. Cheek has led the Student Leadership Academy at Biltmore, which has allowed thousands of students in our region to experience world-class leadership training. And whereas Ms. Cheek has developed close relationships with businesses, large and small, in our region, including AVL Technologies, Mission Health, Biltmore, MB Haynes Corporation, ABB, Eaton Corporation, and many others, which have resulted in a positive impact to students and educators. And whereas Ms. Cheek's professionalism and passion are contagious to all who work with her. And whereas Ms. Cheek has worked closely with elected officials at the county, state, and federal level to advocate for career and technical education to provide more opportunities for students and employers, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: That November 30th, 2018, be and hereby be proclaimed as Kristy Cheek Day in Buncombe County. That all Buncombe County citizens are encouraged to recognize the many contributions of Kristy Cheek to our students, educators, schools, businesses, and community. And finally, that this proclamation be effective upon its date of adoption, which is adopted the 20th day of November 2018, signed by myself, Brownie Newman, on behalf of all the Buncombe County Commissioners.
Thank you.
So we got one, we got one other thing, and then we're going to let Ms. Cheek come up here and say what she would like to, and we're going to try to get a picture with all the commissioners. I want to thank Cataldo for doing this award. I'm going to try to get it out without tearing up the mic there.
Spectacular.
Okay, and so this is our Legacy of Learning Award to Kristy Cheek, Career and Technical Education Director from Buncombe County Government, 2018.
That's spectacular. Wow.
Thank you.
So many of you know that I can't get through things without crying, so I just have to understand this. My passion, you ask what we're thankful for. I'm thankful that we had the opportunity to have students have great education in Buncombe County. I'm thankful for colleagues. I'm thankful for our board. I'm thankful for community members. I'm thankful that we had the opportunity to equalize education and know that Buncombe County students are going to receive quality education that's going to make sure our economy stays strong here in Buncombe County. What great opportunities to connect learning in the classroom with our community corporations and businesses and make it come to life. That's what education is about. It's about equalization. Thank you so much for passing early childhood education, a great start to advancement. I thank you all. We had a great bus ride. It was phenomenal. Your pictures are glowing, as always. Never forget it. I have a heart of this, it's never going to go away, but I too, like you all, I have a family too, and I'm so thankful for them. I have a great superintendent, I have a great associate superintendent, I have a great board, I have a great workforce development partner that keeps me going and going and going, and Nathan has as much energy as I have. I just have to take a little pause on my energy. I thank Commissioner Belcher and Commissioner Presley, who when I call them, they ask because they give inspiration to our children. They are the future of Buncombe County, and we need to ensure that they have the right education to send them forward. They are economic vitality for this community, and we know it. So thank you all. You've been so supportive, and I so appreciate you all. I appreciate you all, and I just thank everyone, because this is what learning is about. I learn and grow every day. I learn from you all, I learn from you all, and I thank you. And so just know, in my heart of hearts, it's just a wonderful place to live, go to school. We have great educators, we have great, everything's right here in Buncombe County. So thank you.
Okay. Once you carry this, and then we'll come back and get the box.
So y'all have to come to, after the commission, and then Franklin.
I hope the cameras are true.
They're my team members, they make these work.
The camera will take me and...
You look like...
You guys, I was good.
Coming around.
You guys.
Three, two, one.
Dr. Bowlin, Suzanne, and Kat Bryant, and Rand, and they, the...
I hope the cameras are true.
They're my team members, they make these work.
The camera will take me and...
You guys.
You guys.
I tried, I tried.
I tried.
school, we have great educators, we have great everything's right here in Buncombe County. So, thank you.
All right.
Once you carry this, and then we'll come back and get the box.
Dr. Bowen, Suzanne, and Kat Bryant, and Rand, and they, they...
I hope the cameras are true.
They're my team members, they make these work.
I hope the cameras are true.
They're my team members, they make these work.
The camera will take me and...
You look like...
I tried, I tried.
That's the way it is?
Yeah, I was like, what?
Next up on our agenda is a presentation on adoption awareness, and this proclamation, is it being presented by Rebecca Smith? Okay, great, thank you. Sure got that right.
I think we have a PowerPoint presentation that should pop up, hopefully. Yes, there we go. Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing us to come and speak with you this evening, we appreciate your time and everybody's time. Is that better? Is that better? Okay. Commissioners, we appreciate your time this evening in giving us the opportunity to come and speak with you, just very briefly about Adoption Month in, in Buncombe County. We wanted to just present a few slides, just to kind of bring everybody's attention to how important adoption is to our community, and, and then just celebrate some of our staff and adoptive families that have come this evening to, to participate in this, in this event. One of the things we wanted to just mention is that adoption is one of the permanency plans that is available to us when we work with families with children that are in our foster care system. And so, I just want to acknowledge that we do a lot of work on the front end with families to try to keep children with their biological parents or their biological families whenever possible. And, so reunification with birth parents is always our primary permanent plan when we start working with families. Unfortunately, that option is not always an option that works out, and so, we are forced to kind of start to look at other options for children, because every child deserves a forever family. Every child deserves a permanent placement with a family. And so, when reunification is no longer an option, we start to look at what the best permanent plan is for that child, and adoption is really our go-to option, because it's the most permanent option. And so, many times, these adoptions are with family members, with grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, folks that these children are connected to and have been connected to for their, for their, most of their lives. Other times, these adoptions are through some of our amazing resource or foster parents that we have in this county. There are other permanency options, and, and we look at those options of guardianship custody when adoption is not in the best interests of the child. But as you will see on the next slide, almost half of the children that have come through our foster care system in fiscal year two thousand eighteen, forty-three percent, we have permanent, identified a permanent family for them and solidified adoption for those At this time in Buncombe County, we have forty-one children that are in the custody of Buncombe County Health and Human Services and, that, who are legally free for adoption. Okay. Only thirteen of those forty-one children are not in a permanent forever home. So the majority of the children that are free for adoption are actually already in an adoptive placement, which is a really, is really good news in my mind. But we do have thirteen children that are waiting to find their forever home. And, so we are doing a lot of work every day, everyday efforts, to try to find forever homes for those thirteen children. I, I highlighted that and brought that to the attention of the Commissioners and, and the community, just to say that we do, in this county, have kids sitting there who are free, legally free for adoption, that do not have a forever home. And so, it's a plea to say, we need more homes, we need more people to step up and look at, is adoption something that's right for their family?
Are those thirteen children older children, or is there a typical commonality with age?
Yes. So of the thirteen children, ten are over the age of thirteen. And then the ones that aren't over the age of thirteen are, several of them were siblings of those teenagers. So yes, that is a common theme, is that you have older children that are more difficult, it's more difficult to find a family, the right-fit family for them. The remaining twenty-eight children, like I said, are in the process of being adopted and are working with our wonderful adoption unit at this time to, to finalize those plans. So we just end with a slide to just highlight, like, you can do that for a kid, like, just trying to get people to recognize that even if they can't think through adoption as an option for their family right now, thinking through what can you do for a child that's in the custody of our county. There are many different options, including like sponsoring for Christmas, or fostering, providing respite, being a community resource volunteer, which is an option. And we have all of that information on our website, so I just highlight that to say there's a lot that we can do for the kiddos that are in Buncombe County's custody. I'd like to finish this evening by acknowledging, recognizing, our, our program manager over our permanency planning unit, Amber Cook, is here this evening. She is boots-on-the-ground making this happen every day. And then we have several folks from our adoption team here, that I'd like to have stand. We have Susan Garland, who's the supervisor over our adoption team, and then we have Mary Jones and Liz Har, and they work directly with the families each and every day to finalize these adoptions and to make sure that these things happen. And then, we also invited a couple of adoptive parents, who I believe are here this evening, I'm not quite sure, because I know there's an overflow room, but Sarah Spurling, I believe, is here, who's one of our adoptive parents, and then also Jennifer and Kurt LaRue, not sure if they were able to make it in. Oh, see? So I just want to take a second and acknowledge the amazing things that these folks have done. Thank you for being here this evening. And then, I'm not sure if the actual proclamation, do you all have?
Yeah, so I'll read the proclamation that the county is gonna sign. Thank you. I'll read the proclamation that the county will sign. November is Adoption Awareness Month, whereas Adoption Awareness Month is celebrated to call attention to the fact that every child deserves to grow up in a loving, nurturing, permanent home, and that this experience lays the foundation for a happy, productive adulthood. And whereas, in North Carolina, eight thousand nine hundred seventy-one children are currently in foster care, and one thousand five hundred twenty-eight children were adopted in two thousand seventeen. And whereas, in Buncombe County, there are three hundred fifty-three children and thirty-one young adults in foster care, and sixty-two were adopted from July first, two thousand seventeen, to June thirtieth, two thousand eighteen. Whereas during the month of November, Buncombe County Human Services, private adoption agent, private adoption agencies, the faith community, and local advocacy groups will participate in a statewide public awareness campaign around adoption. This collaborative effort will focus greater attention on children who need permanent adoptive families and honor families who have adopted children. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of Commissioners for the County of Buncombe as follows: That the month of November two thousand eighteen be proclaimed Adoption Awareness Month in Buncombe County. That, excuse me, that all citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, businesses, and others be encouraged to celebrate adoption and honor adoptive families by increasing their awareness of the issues of adoption and helping to focus attention on the need for adoptive parents and the children who are waiting for permanent homes. This proclamation will be effective upon its adoption on the twentieth day of November two thousand eighteen, signed by myself on behalf of the Buncombe County Commission. So, thank you for, for being here, and thank you to everyone who is working on these important issues in our community.
Thank you so much for having us.
Yeah.
So Chairman, before we move on, just to point out, personal privilege, I want to give a shout-out to my grandson, who's adopted AJ, my son and daughter-in-law, who adopted him in childbirth, and he is a very sweet child, and we're grateful for the, for that opportunity, and I would encourage the county and their, you know, Communications Department and to maybe tackle the need of, if we got, you know, thirteen out there that are ready for home, maybe we can help with that even more, so. But, I just wanted to take the opportunity to do that.
Thank you for doing so. Okay, moving on. Next item is a resolution authorizing refund of overpayment of taxes, and Brandon Freeman will present this item.
Good evening Commissioners. This is an item that comes before the commission from time to time. Whenever a deed is filed in the wrong county, or in Buncombe County, when it should have been filed in another county, the only way for a, a law firm to get their money back is to properly come before the commission and, and ask for a refund. That's happened in this case. I do not believe there is a representative from the best and best law firm, but they have submitted the proper documentation and showed that the money was properly paid to Haywood County, and the deed was properly re-recorded in Haywood County after being recorded in air here in Buncombe County. I would submit their documents that are attached to the resolution as proof of that, and allow that and any other testimony that the public gives to serve as the evidence for this hearing.
Okay. And this does require a public hearing?
I think it does.
Okay. All right. This is for a hundred and twenty dollars, just for context. So, this is not a big game changer, positive or negative, for Buncombe County. But let's open the public hearing at five forty-eight. Is there anyone who wishes to comment on this item?
Hundred and twenty dollars.
Okay, I'm gonna close it at five forty-nine. Is there a motion to approve a resolution authorizing a refund of overpayment of taxes in the amount of one hundred twenty dollars?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next item, Personnel Ordinance Amendment on the Sale of Annual Leave and the Date for Eligibility Determination for Longevity Pay. Michael Frews is gonna present this item. This is an item that the commission has spent a fair amount of time already discussing at several recent meetings, but we're gonna have a little follow-up on it right now.
A lot of time.
Yes, this is not, not the first time before us, so.
Not at all. Chairman, Commissioners. Several months ago, on recommendation of the county manager, he brought before the board benefits packages, and part of that discussion turned to annual leave. And twice, that annual leave question's come back before the board, and on October sixteenth, this board voted to limit the sale of annual leave to four, to one week, was the term based in the resolution, which is a forty-hour work week. We have worked to try to put that into language, and this is a public hearing on that matter. Currently, unlimited amount of whatever you've accrued, you can sell it. The minimum, the only rule was a minimum of eight hours would have to be sold, that's just to prevent trying to come in and sell one hour on a Friday afternoon between paychecks or something of that nature. So it's always been eight hours of minimum. Now, just to read through the recommendation for the board, is upon approval of the Department Director, regular employees may convert up to forty hours of leave to cash, subject to the following conditions: The conversion is limited to a maximum of forty hours per calendar year. A minimum of eight annual leave hours must be sold in any one transaction. Each regular employee converting annual leave must, shall retain a balance after any sale of at least forty annual leave hours, that is, leave forty hours in the bank and not go down to zero. Any request to convert annual leave balance to cash must be made by the regular employee and approved by the Department Director such that the employee is paid before the end of the calendar year. Now, to afford employees some flexibility as we close out this calendar year and go into the next year, if an employee under the current policy wants to sell and spread that cash balance for tax purposes over the two years, we have provided that, in addition, notwithstanding the foregoing, employees may convert all current available annual leave hours to cash through and including January eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. Part of the reason we picked that date is, is that January eighteenth is two weeks before February first, and that February first would be a payday. So we want to keep it in line with what's currently happening, but also, part of the problem with drafting this was to take into account the limitations for dating with our new Workday Finance and HR system. Workday is calendar-driven, so we can't just have a random date, and we need to aim to make all our anniversary dates for these purposes of January first to follow a calendar year. That'll save us a lot of money on the back end, because to make conversions on the custom systems, it would cost over ten thousand dollars each time you try to make a change. The other change before the board is currently, there's an annual leave rollover to sick. If you have sick leave balance, that counts as creditable service at the time of your retirement. Each, each twenty days equals one month of sick leave by state statute for creditable service. So if a person, an employee, by policy and by that state law accumulates up to two years of annual leave, we picked a date, and that was fairly random sometime in the past, that February first is the rollover date of that annual leave to sick leave. And now, again, for Workday purposes, for that programming and to, to make it work more fluidly, we will ask the board to change that date to January first. So if this time around, anybody has, we have a rollover, and they take advantage of this January eighteenth date before it happens, they will communicate with IT staff, and they would make that rollover retroactive and do that manually.
All righty. We do need to have a public hearing on this, and we have talked about this quite a bit previously, but why don't we go ahead and hold a public hearing, and we'll bring it back. So I'm gonna open the public hearing on this at five fifty-three PM. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at five fifty-four PM. Is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you. All right. Mr. Wood, are there any, are there any other items on the county manager's report?
Just a couple things I wanted to mention. One is, we have set up an orientation...
Is your mic on?
Yeah, I'll get that. About the time I leave, I'll figure it out. The, what I'm used to is giving an orientation session to all newly-elected officials, so I've met with our management staff here, put it in the hands of Cataldo Perron, our new communications director, and Cataldo has put together a, an orientation session for Mrs. Edwards, and we've run all the scheduling by her and our department heads. Basically, what we will do is give them thirty to forty-five minutes, in some cases, an hour, hour and a half, depending on the different locations that they have. She will meet with the department head at their location, meet some of their key people, and then get a briefing on what all they do in that department. But the primary reason is to let them meet, put a name, you know, faces with names and that sort of thing, but also just to get a good overview of that. So we hope to be, we'll start with that on, I believe, December the third, should be through by December fourteen. Not every day will be there, some days she was not able to make. We will have that scheduled out shortly. I wanted to make an open invitation, I know all of y'all have been on for some time, but if you would like to do that, or just certain components of it, where you particularly want to see a certain department, I would encourage you to do that, and, you know, we would certainly welcome your participation in that. But this is somewhat unique for Buncombe County, but it's something we think you ought to do every two years when you get new board members on. That'll be followed up by something that all of you have been through, and that is the newly-elected official school at the University of North Carolina School of Government puts on. That'll be a two-day program on January seventeen and eighteen. The good news is that while it's taught in Chapel Hill, they always do a session in western North Carolina, and fortunately, they do that in Asheville, so we have made Mrs. Edwards aware of that, and Lamar is working with her to get her registered for that. So basically, by the middle part of January, we will have given her a local orientation, and she will also have that orientation from the School of Government. So, I think she'll be off to a great start. She's very enthusiastic about it, so we look forward to that. That's the... That's the main thing I wanted to talk about, and then the Planning Director asked me to let you know that while this will be on our meeting date, this is for the public, that the North Carolina DOT will be holding an open house and public hearing for the I-26 Connector Project on Tuesday, December 4th, at the Renaissance Hotel in downtown Asheville. The open house will take place from 4:00 to 6:30 PM, with public hearings starting at 7:00 PM. And so, if anybody would like to attend on that, we just wanted to make y'all aware that that is coming up. Again, we won't be able to because of our meeting. And those are the main things we have. I think at this point, I'll just stop. I've got a few other things, but we've already gone over them.
All right. Thank you very much. Under old business, we have consideration of a motion to approve a resolution adopting a new procurement manual for Buncombe County, and Dustin Clark and Ron Venturella will, from Finance Department, will present this item. Like some of the other items we've discussed tonight, this is an item the Commission has spent a fair amount of time on in recent meetings, but we want to take some action on tonight.
Thank you, Chairman and Board Members. So, we're just back finishing out our period of feedback and review. We've heard some comments from the Board members about specifics in the manual. There really haven't been any substantive changes to the manual, so from our point of view, we're ready for you to adopt. I think there's a resolution that's been drafted, so unless there's any more feedback that you have for us tonight, I would look for you to make an action on that resolution.
When you say there's no changes, you mean there's no changes since the last time you presented it?
Correct. The draft that we provided a few weeks ago, outside of a few typos and grammatical corrections, is the same as it was then.
But this is a comprehensive review of all of your purchasing policies and contracting I'd just like to make a couple of comments. One is, you'll see in the adopting resolution that it makes it clear that this is adopted by resolution and can only be amended by resolution. And the second thing is that it applies to everybody in Buncombe County government, from the Board of Commissioners to the manager, to every employee. So, what we're doing is making it clear is, you set the policy. Management cannot change the policy or ignore the policy, which is obviously some of the problem that you had in the past. But all of that is put in place as an internal control to make sure that these policies are to be followed.
All right. Thank you very much. Someone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a comment.
All right.
I've talked to Ron the other day about this, and I've looked at it, and it's 38 pages long. And then I asked him to look at the state, and it's a page long. So, we're stepping overboard in my eyes. You know, we all understand that we can't go buy gift cards anymore. That's one thing, it's out of the stream. You know, it's been a bad deal for quite a while now. But to put a 38-page thing together, basically stating that, you know, certain people from $0 to $5,000 can do this, and then from $5,000 to $10,000, and that goes department, department, department. There's got to be a simpler way to do this, gentlemen. And for that reason, you know, I want to look at simple. I understand everybody in this county is probably scared for their jobs if they do something wrong with their P card. And if they go buy a gift card and give it away, then that automatically should be, you know, termination. But we have gift cards, and they go through DSS, and I understand that, you know, so, but this is, in my eyes, this is just overboard. I talked to Ron about it the other day, I think he understood it. We looked at the state, it's a lot smaller. The state is for 100 counties, not for just one, and that's just basically, what I'm looking at is, we need to regroup and back down. We don't need 14 in a committee putting stuff together that some of us, you know, it's kind of hard to understand, or just trying to make rules that we don't know exactly what it means, so. That's my saying on this, and I'll probably be voting against it. Thank you.
So, question. There's a lot, Mr. Wood, or either of you gentlemen, Newman, who'd like to field this, a lot of the purchasing protocols for government in North Carolina, both state agencies and then county organizations, are actually driven by the state statutes, or at least they set minimum thresholds, that they have to be at least as strong as that. So, the policies that we would put in place here, in some cases, they are stronger than the state policies.
Right.
Right? Well, I, you know, I would just say, you know, I certainly don't think we need to make things more complicated than they need to be, and, but I think this is very important. I mean, you know, kind of for obvious reasons. I mean, there has been abuse of money, and sometimes it was done in ways that violated our ordinances and our laws, but sometimes it was done, at least in part, in ways that actually were not in violation of state law. You know, the, there are certain contracts that county governments can enter into with individuals that never have to be, you know, they're not based on competitive bid because it's just based on qualifications, which frankly is highly subjective, and they don't have to be, and they can be renewed over and over and over again for long periods of time. And so, I think this is very important, and I appreciate the work that went into it. You know, this is a big organization and spends a lot of public resources, and so I think having a detailed policy on how, which contracts can be approved at the staff level, and which ones need to be approved in an open public meeting, just makes all the sense in the world. So, I'm very supportive of it.
Well, you know, until I read it, when I first saw it, I thought, too, why do we have 38 pages?
It's actually, it's actually 48.
I know, 48. But after reading it, I understand why, because we have 15, over 1,500 employees, and we have an obligation to our employees to make everything that, the way we hold them responsible to be crystal clear. And I think we do it in the procurement manual. And that's one of the reasons that we are where we are now, cleaning up the mess we're trying, we're cleaning up, is because we didn't do a good job in the past of spelling out, this is what you are held responsible for, this is how we do it. Because until we put it in writing, folks, what we're doing is, that's when you leave it to individuals to stretch that rubber band, and boom, we're back where we are when it breaks. So, I think this is, we're doing it the right way, and to have employees to put it together, too, is important, because we have the people who actually work with it, who do it, spelling out, you know, how we hold people accountable. So, for that reason, I can not do anything but vote for it.
I'll make a motion to approve it, and I can hear what everybody's saying, but for me, the best thing about this is, it's an Employee Protection Act. No longer can somebody's superior tell them to do something, and this is spelled out, and they have protection, so, and thank you for the, and I agree about 48 pages, but I think for employees' benefit, I think it's great work, and thank you. So, that was my million.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
So, I've got this comment. I'm going to take a little bit of a different position, or maybe paint a little different picture than some of my colleagues. County Manager, I would like to ask you, from a execution of normal day of business, was there anything in here that gave you any pause that those that are out there doing daily business are going to be able to conduct it the way they have, you know, for the last 20 years?
I think they'll be able to conduct business normally. I didn't find anything in here that's unusual compared to what I've done in other jurisdictions. I think what it does do is to say that for the larger purchases, you need to do some planning.
Yeah.
You don't wait till the last minute and then come in and say, oh, I need a $50,000 whatever. You know, you need to plan it, go through the normal process for procurement, and then you'll have it on time.
So, thank you for that. So, I do agree with the comments. I agree with my, you know, colleague, Mr. Frye, about, you know, the number of pages, 48 pages is a lot, and it's very complicated. I don't think it interrupts business. I think if it does, then we would fix that, but my different take that I was going to do is that, is that this is not personal. This is paper. That's what this is. This is a document, and so it's not something that's directed to, towards individuals. It's a simple procurement policy. It addresses things from losing a receipt. How do you deal with losing a receipt? We wouldn't think we would need to put something like that in there, but it's in there because what happens if you lose a receipt?
It's, yeah.
Okay? It's in there. You know, what happens if somebody steps out of bounds? That's in there. There's accountability in that. You know, there's the Commission approval, the Commission's, you know, being involved more, it'll take a little bit more time, and that's, you know, that's certainly necessary at this time. The thresholds that are in there, I think, are fine. I don't want anything to interfere with normal flow of business, that's why I asked, that's why I asked that question. You know, there's good, you know, it's about audit and administration. I mean, that's what this is. It's just a simple policy manual that has been refined, and in lieu of some of the shortcomings, you know, some of those have been fixed. And so, for that reason, I'll support it.
All right. Any members of the public who would like to comment on the motion? Mr. Yelton.
I sat here and I listened to this discussion, and you know what's going through my mind? You didn't have a policy, and the Board at that time couldn't catch what's going on. So, now you've got 48 pages to keep up to catch somebody doing something wrong. So, you know who is going to make it work if it's one page, two pages, three pages, or 9,000 pages? You folks right up there. It's your responsibility to see that those 49 pages are enforced. Now, you've got a good background for this, so everybody up there needs to take a section of that budget and watch it every month. And if you put all your checks on the Internet like I hope you said you were going to, it'll be very easy for you to follow the money trail. So, I don't care what you say, it's up to you guys sitting up there. And I say guys and gals because I just, guys mean the same thing nowadays, there's no difference. I just heard today that they had just, the vagina monologue's not going to be shown in the Moore's University of Virginia. You know why? Not only girls are not the only ones that have a vagina.
That's the truth, folks, that's the issue.
All right. All right, anybody else?
I wasn't going to comment on this one, but I think I will because I think 48 pages is quite good, and I especially agree with Commissioner Frost's comment about protection for employees. The first thing I did when I moved here to Asheville was split apart the responsibilities of the people on the staff that worked at the company I was at. And the second thing I did was fire the guy in New York who was ripping the company off for $400,000 a year. That's the kind of thing this policy will protect against because it probably, I unfortunately didn't read it, but I'm assuming it defines what accounting does, it defines what procurement does, and it gives protection for employees. The other thing, we've had a comment of 1,500 employees, I doubt very highly all 1,500, we'll have to even look at this manual. Most of the departments have a centralized purchasing, that's the person who's going to have to know it. So, I totally agree with it, go ahead and do it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion by the Commission? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Chairman Newman, can I have just a quick moment of personal privilege?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to thoroughly embarrass my, the two lights of my life, my daughter Elizabeth and my granddaughter Alexis. Thank you guys for coming.
Where y'all at?
Right over here.
Stand up, stand up and wave at us, say, hey, I see you back there.
Oh, I see you, let's say back there, she's back.
So, if y'all have been wondering why we've been getting along so well up here tonight, this is nice water. I don't know where it came from, but somebody put that up here tonight, so we're all trying to be really, really nice because we have nice, we're drinking nice water up here. No joke, look at that, nice water.
And we do want to be done by Thanksgiving Day.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right. The motion is approved. Okay, we deferred the eligibility separation allowance item, so we come next to consideration of a motion to authorize design plan specifications and bid documents for the East Asheville Library based on the schematic design. And to, all right, all right, so please, 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 please do not cheer or boo anything that anybody else says in the meeting, whether you like it or hate it, just, everyone gets their chance to speak. To advertise for bids for this project, and George Wood will start us off.
Okay. And Jim's going to chime in as well. Basically, we've been working on this project for several years, and where we're at right now is, we have the schematic design, and it's on, the schematic design is where you show what the exterior of the building will look like, you show it on the plat of land and show the parking and everything, and then the third component of that is the interior layout or the floor plan. So, that's what we have right now, and what we're about tonight is to ask you to authorize us to move forward with what's called full design, and that's where we would authorize the architect to complete the detailed plans, you know, the foundation, plumbing, electrical, all the walls, everything, and so that it can be bid out, and they would do the plans, they would do all of the specifications, which the contractors need to bid the job. We have a construction manager at risk on this job. Clint Shepherd, our Director of Facilities and Fleet Management, will be negotiating that contract. We have one with him right now for what's called the pre-construction phase, which is the design phase. So, what this motion would be is for you to go for, to authorize us to go forward with full design, plan specifications, and to develop the contract bid documents for the East Asheville Branch Library based on the schematic design, and to authorize the construction manager at risk to advertise for bids once Clint gives him the go-ahead on that. And then what would happen after that is, we would come back to you before we started construction, and you would authorize that contract with the construction manager at risk, and included in that would be the firm price based on those bids, and also based on the construction manager at risk contract that Clint will negotiate with him. So, that's where we're at. I know the, one of the main issues has been that this has come in about 1.3 million more than an initial architectural estimation that we had. We reviewed everything. It's our opinion that we should move forward on this library, and what we're proposing is, is that you use $1.3 million of fund balance. As I reported to you earlier this week, we underspent last year's budget by about $4.5 million, so the money is there, and we would propose that you go forward with it. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Jim, and I believe you have some comments, and then Jim Blanton.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. It's a great opportunity to be here to talk about the East Asheville Library Branch. As Mr. Wood said, this has been a project that we've been working on together with the Commission and with the community for many years, and it's a pleasure to be able to bring it, to see design schematic drawings and to move forward with this, hopefully. And just to give you a little bit of background, I want to just to give you some lay of the land. This is the existing library footprint, and you'll see on the left, it's hard to see, but the existing, on the left-hand side, that arrow represents the existing library structure, and that's 2,700 square feet. There's a courtyard in between there, and then there is another space that used to be used for be used for some meeting rooms, both for the library and for the community, but that space is currently leased out. This land and the buildings are owned by the City of Asheville, and we are in a lease negotiation for a long-term lease for the new area. As you'll see there also, there is a playground that has -- it is used a lot by families and children that use both that community as well as that library, and it's been a big draw. If you've ever been to that library, you've seen, no doubt, that it's almost always full. It has the fifth highest circulation numbers of our 13 branches that we have in the county. It is the third smallest that we have at 2,700 square feet. So it's a very well-used and very active branch library. This is the footprint of the new library. It's taking the exact same picture and looking at it differently. You'll see near the clock, that's the existing space where the fire department is, East Asheville Fire Department is, new parking, and then the layout of the new library. And that's in compliance with the zoning of the City of Asheville, and we are working very closely with the Planning Department and the Zoning Department of the City of Asheville to assure that everything that we're doing meets the requirements for that and is also in keeping with the community. You'll see here that it does provide library space and lots of open space and lots of programming space to allow for not only meeting space for the community, but for an intense improvement and increase in the amount of programs that we're able to show. And Jim Blanton, our new library director, is going to come up in just a minute and talk more about that after we see these pictures as we go through here. So if I can get it to move to the next slide. There we go. This is a schematic of what it looks like, what it will look like. And I would just like to say that this is not something that we just came up with. This has been a community effort. At the last meeting that we had where we looked to the community to help us decide, is this the best location for this branch? At that time, we decided with the community's input to have an East Asheville Design Committee. And so there are members of that design committee here tonight. If you just raise your hand to let folks know that you're here. And what that design committee did was not only to help us in looking at space from a programmatic perspective, but also to make sure that the design that we're putting forward is reflective of the East Asheville community and is also reflective of the type of construction and design that's there. And as you'll see, as we move forward here, there's lots of brick, there's lots of glass, which is a more contemporary feel. But there's also a more of a bungalow ranch-type design, which is in character with the houses and the community there, especially where the library is located. So we're just going through the different views of the library. This is the view right looking at Avon Street, if you're familiar with that, when you turn left off of Tunnel Road and the East Asheville, which is now the current entrance to the library. This is that road that passes there. This is looking back from what will be the playground, looking at the area. And where you're looking is a children's activity room and children's programming area. So one of the things that the community really wanted was to be able to have an inside-outside feel so that when parents are in there with their children, they have the ability to look both inside and work with their children in learning activity, but also to look at their children outside playing. Just another view, and I would point out the red figure there, is it was very important for the people in the community to know that the Japanese red maple that was there was preserved, and we're able to do that. So grateful that we're able to do that, and I think it will hold a place of prominence there. Again, just showing more of what the roof design is. If you look in the upper part, that's the existing fire department. And we have, as I said, worked very closely with the city to assure that all the fire department needs are met, that there's no disruption to the fire department as well. So as Mr. Wood said, this is the specific request that we're asking you tonight to do, to approve moving forward with full design, plan, specifications, and construction documents based on the schematic design for the East Asheville Branch Library on the existing site, and to authorize soliciting bids by the construction manager at risk.
All right.
So if I could, just take just a moment and introduce Jim Blanton, who is our new director of our library system. Jim comes to us as the director from the Louisville Free Public Library in Louisville, Kentucky. He's had a lot of experience both in the library system, but also in construction of new libraries, and has worked from a national perspective at looking what a library should be and what it can be. And I'd like for Jim to just talk a little bit about that.
Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Blanton.
Thank you. And I just want to say how thankful I am and excited I am to be here. And I also have to say, thanks to the community supporters who are here tonight. I just hope every meeting is like this. This is the best way to start out. But cheers, it's wonderful. Like Jim said, I have had experience in building. The past three years of my life had been immersed in building, designing, construction. And he called me shortly before I arrived here and said, "Be ready to hit the ground running." And he wasn't kidding. He showed me the plans and the designs right away, and I was just so thrilled that this project was imminent. And so I had a chance to review those and also meet with the design team and talk a little bit about them. And I think what Jim was interested in hearing was my perspective on, are the plans on target with what we would expect in a library for this community? And I think the answer to that is yes. When you look at libraries moving forward, they're really hubs of lifelong learning and community engagement. So you want certain programmatic elements to be incorporated in those. And this floor plan incorporates everything I would expect to see in a footprint that I would also expect for a community of this size. It has programming space, which is really important, obviously. I remember when I -- before I actually interviewed for the job, I toured the system, and this library stuck out in particular because it was so busy when I was there. In fact, they were having a children's program that day, and there was a sign up saying, "Beware, there's going to be noisy children in here." So you really want to dedicate space so that those kinds of activities can take place, while other functions can take place too. And I think that this design definitely checks that box. There is a large community programming space, and there's also an area in the children's area as well for activities. You also have a dedicated teen area, which also is important to serve that group as well. And then you have a really nice-sized area for adult collections. There's also a café built into this design, which is interesting. And we were working on a café in a library I was building just before I left Louisville. And we'll certainly look at that closely as we move forward with the design. But that kind of speaks to that, bringing the community in to have a really exciting experience when you come in that encourages you to stay and enjoy the space, not just come and check out a book and go, but really to be there and engage and learn on-site. So really, I'm excited by the design. I'm also excited by the fact that the community was so engaged in the process for developing the building, particularly making sure that it reflects the community of which it is a part. It's contemporary, but it also reflects the look and feel of the neighborhood as well. So I mean, I couldn't be more excited to be a part of the project, and I'm looking forward to talking with the design team more and kind of fleshing out what happens inside the building as well as outside. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And just again, excited to be here. Thank you for having me.
I'd like to comment and say, thank Jim for an extraordinary effort of community collaboration, and also personally thank you for all the mentorship you've given me over the many years that we have worked together. And this is long overdue. When I -- Joe and I were talking, when we first got on the commission six years ago, this library was on the capital plan. And I thank the community for being patient, urgent, and sometimes pushy because that's what it took to keep getting everybody's attention. Libraries are easier things to be put on the back burner, and it was just -- and Gigi, it was just a great effort. And I'm really excited that I'm here to vote for this.
All right. Please don't cheer. The book waving, I guess we'll let that go, but don't cheer. All right. So we do have a motion in a second. Are there other comments that any commissioners would like to make on the proposal?
Just briefly, I'd like to just say, big thank you to the many community leaders and the many members of library staff who've had a hand in getting to this stage of the process. This is one of the branch libraries that I get to visit and spend a lot of time in the children's section there. And I love the current version of it, but cannot wait for the new and expanded version and programming. And just really, you know, one thing that I think is so striking about libraries and kind of speaks to something that Ellen said earlier in the evening, is that this is one of the places where so many different kinds of people in our community are in the same space under one roof. And libraries kind of bring our community together in unique ways. And I think that's just one more reason why they're so important, and it's important to have enough space to accommodate the demand that's obviously there. So thank you all for the great passion that's gone into this, and I'm just so excited for this project to be formally moving forward.
And Brownie?
Yes, sir.
Before I make comments, I'd like to make a second. Nobody did. We didn't make a second.
Okay. Thank you. Who made the original motion?
I did.
Okay, Ellen did. Thank you. All right. Thank you for seconding that.
What I would like to say is that I'm glad to see, because when I started working early on and back in the late '70s, my first branch was at East Asheville, which is where Sun Trust is now, the First Union. And I would visit the library some to read the Wall Street Journal. And even back then, the library was busy. So you come forward today, and I want to see us go ahead and get it approved because when you all started working on the library, my hair was black. And if we don't move ahead with it, I might look like Joe going forward. Yeah, but I really think it's long overdue, and we owe it to the community. And thank all of you, staff, and most of all, the residents of East Asheville who've worked on this. And I know you all have worked on this for a number of years, and it's long overdue, and it's time for us to complete it. Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other commissioners wish to comment?
No, I'm just ready to go. This is long overdue, and it's -- well, the hundreds of emails I got, they just kept coming, you know? And that just shows the concern.
We won't mention.
Yeah, hundreds, not hundred, hundreds. And I'm ready to go forward with this.
So I've got a couple of comments. Like Commissioner Frost mentioned, I went out there a long time ago, and I do want to comment. I know that Chairman Newman has went to numerous meetings in East Asheville, and I know he's been a fixture out there among you guys. But I want, with the addition of our new library director, and we've got a couple of things that I believe are, I mean, historic's not the right word, but maybe showing a change of direction in Buncombe County might be more descriptive. But we recently received a -- one of the largest grants, it may be the largest grant, from the Tourism Board for expansion of Buncombe County Sports Park, construction of the Inca Heritage Educational Trail. And I put these two together, the expansion of the East Asheville Library, work being done on the Inca Library. You know, we have priorities, you know, about opioid reduction, taking care of children in poor communities, and both of those are going to move forward, you know, meeting some of those goals. And, you know, I do think the building did end up more than what we thought of, but, you know, the longer we put it off, the more expensive it's going to be. And I mean, unfortunately, that's the world that we're in. I have mentioned to our new director in that, you know, one of the fixtures in a lot of the communities are asking for community space. I do want to make sure that we effectively measure that, you know, going forward. You know, the YMCA, other places are doing those things, and I want to make sure that we're effectively measuring that so that, you know, if we're using that space, that's great. If not, it may be needed for children programming, but I'm confident with your experience that you're going to do that and do it in the best interest of the community. But I'm excited about this moving forward, and as well as some of the direction of some of meeting the recreational needs of our families in Buncombe County, too.
All right. We will take public comment in just a minute. I will just share my comments on this, too. I think it has been a great process. The community's been just, you know, not just a great, doing a great job advocating for the need for a project, but just really creative, constructive input on what that project should look like. And I think it's resulted in a great, you know, what's going to be a great project. And so I'm excited about it. It's going to be a great community space in addition to some of the more traditional functions of our library system. So it's going to be great for those neighborhoods, really that whole part of the county. It's going to be really kind of a regional facility in a lot of ways. So I'm very excited about it and looking forward to seeing it open in the near future. So we will take public comment. I think that, you know, a lot of folks have commented, I think this is going to go forward, but we will open it for public comment. Yes, sir?
I'm ready to do this. You know, George has explained to us that we'd finally have a little bit of money that we can put forward. Yes, it's a million three over from where it was, but it's time to do it because things are not going to get cheaper, construction around here now. Finding somebody to do the construction is probably going to be the hardest part. So Clint's going to do the job through this, and I'm for it. And as Brownie said, the public can speak, but I think you're looking at seven commissioners at the present time that are 100% behind this. So thank you.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on the motion? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Amy Chilson. I'm a teacher and educational program coordinator at Biltmore. I come from a family of writers and readers. I am one of seven children, and I have a sister who is a librarian. And when there were only four children left at home, my mother decided that she had too much time on her hands, so she became a middle school librarian for the next 25 years. So libraries are very close to my heart. When I moved to Asheville from the Adirondack Mountains 11 years ago, the first thing I did was get my library card and join the East Asheville Book Club. Now, we have over 25 members in our book club, which is a wonderful thing, but if we all come at the same time, it is a very big crunch. We meet in the children's section of the library. We sit on child-sized chairs around a small table. When a child wants a book, she has to squeeze in among us to reach it. Occasionally, we have a local author come and tell us about his latest work. We can fit 30 chairs in only by pushing all the tables to one side. I would like you to think of this new space, not as a library with a variety of dedicated rooms, but as a community space. We live in divisive times. It would be great if we could build a building that promoted togetherness, that really strengthened our community. I'd like you to imagine a multi-use building where a mother can bring her preschoolers to listen to a book about Paris George at storytime. Then they will go to the maker's room to create monkey puppets. Then they will run outside to become monkeys on the playground swings. At the same time, in one of the small community rooms, there is a lecture about collecting wild edible mushrooms. In another community room, there is a presentation by an Asheville artist. Local veterans have come to use the computers to check their email and read the paper. A group of seniors have come to have tea in the café before they spend a couple of hours reading by the sunny library windows. Some middle school students are meeting in one of the study rooms to go over a class project. In the evening, those small community rooms will become one large room for a counterdance, a concert, a book club meeting, a meeting about the local bear problem, a talk by a local author. This new library will last a long time, perhaps 50 years. Asheville is a growing city. Let's not get 10 years down the road and discover that we need more space because we have cut corners now.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay. All right. Please don't applaud. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm a resident of Hawk Creek, and also I've come out of the construction area. Now, what you're approving tonight, as I understand it, is to go to the stage of putting out an RFP, on an actual, so you can go and solicit bids for the actual building of the library. Design is the exciting part. It's really fun. You put it together. You put it together, lots of color, lots of items going up. Getting it done is the hard part. And we've recently had a diversion of funds from that were specified out of tax dollars that was going to go to a specific project. And they were taken away from that project and put into the general fund. I'm just bringing up the item of not what you're approving tonight, but farther down the road, when we get to the point of, do we have the money to construct what we've designed? And so, I'm asking that be taken into consideration seriously, because it would leave us with what we have now, if the money is not there to make it happen after you've designed it and put it out for bid. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Lea Bell Paladino, and I'm 14, and I attend Evergreen Community Charter School. I've been going to this library for about a decade, and I'm a card-carrying member of it. And this would open up so much more opportunities. Like, this library is great on its own, you know? It's very tight, close-knit or whatever, and like, we get to, you know, be around each other more. But if we had more spaces, like, you know, a conference room or whatever, where we could have meetings for, and not just have to go to the church to hold these meetings and be able to talk with one another, like they said before, it wouldn't just be a library, it would be a community center. I mean, there'd be more spaces for people my age to come and study and work together on projects and stuff. It would just be more, like, just better, I guess. And, like, there's this little aisle in the teen, young adult section, and it's super, super small. And like, if you have to look for a book, you have to like squat down or whatever, and somebody might have to come by you, and it's like, excuse me, can I get around you? And obviously, there's nothing wrong with having to stand up and move out of somebody's way. But like, you know, it'd just be nice to have, you know, spot where you don't have to get out of somebody's way or be in somebody's way, and you can look at all of these wonderful books and just really get to just see what your options are and not just, you know, be in this tight little corner or whatever. So, I want to thank you in advance for this, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Please, please do not applaud. Okay, thanks. All right, who else? Anybody else? Mr. Yelton, Mr., you'll go next, Mr. Yelton. Come on up.
Thank you for your commitment and your consideration of this vital change of life for, in East Asheville, for its many neighborhoods, from Kennelworth to Chuns Cove. You know you've run out of space when people my size have to reach up here to get a book off the top shelf. You've run out of space when the Library Friends Board meets in the 8-by-10 alcove they mentioned earlier, in the children's area, while parents reach around you to pull off books for their children. You've run out of space when you stick a six-foot table in the middle of where people pass right beside you to go to the computers six feet away, or to get the will-call books, or the history collection, or the magazines, or the newspapers. And yet, there's a sign on that table that says, "Quiet study space." Completed in 1966, East Asheville Library is 53-plus years old. It is old. It has shrunk. The city was allowed to take half the space for an office, which has shut out many neighborhoods of any meeting space, were it not for the grace of our community churches. Its outdoor toilets make it a laughing stock. Its parking spaces are extremely limited, and about half are now illegal. The building is unwelcoming and certainly unbecoming to some of Asheville's most special and attractive neighborhoods. We are grateful that you've hired this exciting new leader, and we look forward to working with him. But now, give him something to work with, as you sound like you're going to, and we're just so excited about that. The building and the upgrades and the whole system expand your future of county income tax. Ashevilleians are an intelligent lot, and they need books, new books, and not on seven-foot shelving, DVDs and stimulating programs, and places where they can communicate with each other and build that community. We'll do our part, and we believe, obviously, it sounds like you're going to do yours, and we are so grateful. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a serious question, Brownie. As you look, as I look at that building, I see a lot of roof area. Is the orientation, and could that roof be modified for solar energy? There's a lot of space there, and there's not a lot of trees, I don't think, around that area. I don't know, but that's something I would like to see checked out before you do the final design. That's something an architect or engineer could check real quick with, because you can give them the details as needed for the angle. And that would help offset the cost of the maintenance of the library. Now, speaking of the maintenance of the library, I'm very glad to meet the new director of the library. And I hope he and the seven commissioners up there get just as much of a burn in your heart for finding out how much it costs to run each library. I asked that question of the previous generation, and even the previous generation agreed that that was a wonderful question. And we do not know what it costs to run each library. That is part of the problem of not being able to address the needs of the library. And thank you, this one's ranked number five. And I've looked at the book usage. So, I think this is something you need to get a burr under your saddle for. You'd need your new director to lay out a plan where he's going to allocate maintenance costs. He can allocate everything that's done to each library. And then, each community can know what kind of money is going to their community. And if it costs $5 million to build this, guess what? It does, but you can't know what you got if you don't know what you're doing.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Rice? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I think we need to look at this thing a little bigger, a little better. It's been talked about for years about our public libraries, and the expense of this is on the taxpayers' back, and it's in the current expense money in the operation of it. We need to be looking at the school buildings that has the libraries in them and see how we can have community. We've already got communities, schools in the community, in the districts. So, why can we not look at the libraries within the school building, which is being shrunk in many ways because of not much use as they should be? Why don't we look at that? I mean, building these buildings are getting more expensive, and yes, you do have community. But what about the community in each of our school districts? So, I'd like for somebody to follow up with that, because it's been talked about, it's been great ideas in the past, but nobody has followed through on the commission to make sure that happened. So, my tax money, I'd like to see it took care of in a way that, why should we be paying for these libraries at school and not getting the full benefit of the community out of them? Thank you.
Hey, does anyone else wish to comment before we vote on this? Yes, sir.
Well, I've made it a point to go to the library board meetings, and this past Thursday, the discussion at the library board meeting was that all we had was a floor plan. And then, I see this wonderful drawing that's really spectacular. I love all the lighting, all the natural light that'll be going into the building. So, it's a totally different meeting here than what I expected. I'm very pleased with that. I'd just like to know what the total building cost is going to be. I've heard that it's 1.3 million more than what we expected. So, it'd just be nice to know. Back in 2015, we had allocated $3 million each for an East expansion and an Inca Candlar expansion. In 2016, the Inca Candlar went down to 520,000. So, I'm just wondering also, Inca Candlar's under construction right now, and I liked Commissioner Belcher's comment about the park over there and the $6 million. Do we know what's going on at Inca Candlar? Do we have final drawings? Do we have the community involvement that we obviously had here for East? Those are just questions I have for that library as well. And I'm just very happy to see we are having the expansion. And once again, I agree with Commissioner Frost that far too often, the libraries get put on the back burner. We had a library commission years ago where three and a half cents of our taxes went to that library commission. That was a time period where we had over $9 million in the cultural and recreation budget, and today, we're down to $7 million. So, let's see what we can do to pick that back up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to bring it back to the commission for further discussion. There is a motion and a second, excuse me, to authorize full design plan specifications and contract bid documents for the East Asheville Branch Library based on the schematic design and to authorize the CMAR to advertise for bids. There's a motion and a second, further discussion from the board?
Just got a couple of comments, you know, that, for the, our library director, you know, annual report or quarterly reporting or something that answers some of the questions probably don't have a bad idea. And the question about the Inca Candlar Library, we actually talked about that, you know, today. And that's moving forward for those, those comments. But I'm happy to support the motion.
Great. All right. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it's approved. All right. All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming out for this and for your involvement in it. We're going to, we're going to keep on going. So, please, please try to keep your voice down as we're going to keep going in the next meeting, agenda item. Okay, the next item on our agenda is a motion to approve a resolution adopting a new personnel position classification and pay plan. And George is going to start us off on this, on this item.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, if you'll bear with me a minute, my computer went to sleep. Good. Okay. Y'all ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm just going to read a little bit from the memo that I gave you. Just to remind you, the county did enter into a contract with Evergreen Solutions LLC in January of 2018 to conduct a personnel classification and pay study for all Buncombe County employees. We had that consultant make a presentation to you in August on the methodology used to perform the study. And the consultant is Ms. Nancy Berkeley. She's sitting next to Margaret, so she is here tonight, not to make a presentation, because she pretty much made that to you in August. But if you have any questions between she and I and Margaret, we'll be happy to answer those. So, enclosed is a copy of the full study, which details the counties and cities in North Carolina that were used as benchmarks to compare salary and wage levels. Please note also that Mission Health, Mahak, and UNC Asheville were also included. The complete list is on page 4-2 of the study, 4-2. The study of comparable governments and the other three showed that the minimum, in other words, the beginning step of each grade, in Buncombe County salaries and wages averaged 9% higher. Please note that this comparison was made after adjusting for the relative cost of living in each jurisdiction. So, the higher cost of living in Buncombe County relative to a number of those other counties already has been factored in. The midpoint for salaries and wages averaged 5.1% higher, and the maximum point for them averaged 2.7% higher than the comparable entities. While that is on average, there are some specific positions that were determined to be lower than the market, and the plan calls for them to be taken to a higher grade. There are 92 employees in this category, and the resulting cost to the county will be $117,450. That's to get them onto the plan. It'll actually be a little higher because of fringe benefits that are tied to salary. The study recommends to keep the plan current with changing market conditions, that the Human Resources Department conducts small-scale salary surveys as needed for hard-to-fill positions or those experiencing above-average turnover. And this is standard practice. So, as we go through the ensuing years, if you start having a turnover problem in a specific area, you're probably below market, and you need to do a study on that specific job classification. It can also be where you have hard-to-fill positions. You may not be compensating enough to attract adequate candidates for that. They then recommend that you conduct a new pay plan every three to five years. In my experience, every five years is sufficient if you conduct the small-scale surveys recommended above. So, you would put the new pay plan in, you go four years, and then you have another pay plan done. During those four years, your HR director would be studying the turnover problems, your department heads would be reporting where they're having issues, and then you would do those small-scale surveys to keep it current. It's important to note that these pay studies cost nearly $75,000. So, you want to do them in a timely manner, but you don't want to do them before you have to do them because of the cost. So, the recommendation is to place every employee within the appropriate grade, at least 4.5% higher than the minimum point. And the reason for that is, is that newly hired employees and those that are promoted to new positions are eligible for up to a 4.5% increase when they successfully complete a six-month probationary period. So, you do not want them making more money than current employees. So, your current employees have to be at least 4.5% into that grade. As part of the classification and pay study, Evergreen has developed new job or position descriptions. Customary practice is to adopt those administratively, so the Board of Commissioners does not have to approve minor changes to those. And that's what we're recommending to you, is that we will do those administratively. However, to assure that the plan remains intact, the adopting resolution calls for any job description changes sought by a department head to be approved by both the Human Resources Director and the County Manager. So, there is a review process for this. In order to maintain the plan's integrity, no one can change a position title, or the assigned grade, or add a new position to the plan without a written resolution approved by the Board of Commissioners. That assures that you, as the governing body, know any changes beforehand and have approved them. For example, if staff requested a change in assigned grade from a position from grade 75 to grade 77, you should be given a cover memo explaining the reason and the resolution for adoption by you that specifically authorizes the grade change. This is an internal control mechanism that needs to be followed, and the adopting resolution contains that provision. The resolution also calls for the HR Director to maintain a current copy of the plan and the copies of all resolutions where changes have been authorized. This is standard practice as well. Finally, the study and our review of it by the interim HR Director and team has taken longer than expected, as we sent it back to our department heads for one additional review with the interim HR Director. Given that, I'm recommending, and the adopting resolution calls, for any pay adjustments to longer than expected as we sent it back to our department heads for one additional review with the interim HR Director. Given that, I'm recommending, and the adopting resolution calls, for any pay adjustments to be made retroactive to July 1, 2018, the beginning of the fiscal year. That way, no employee will have been adversely affected by the delay in getting this adopted. This plan allows the flexibility by using minimum and maximum points on a pay grade to allow either annual cost-of-living adjustments, which is what you use now, and/or merit increases based on job performance evaluations. The county currently does not use performance evaluations in all of our departments. I highly recommend that your new HR Director develop a performance evaluation system as soon as possible. In the meantime, you would need to continue to use COLAs on an annual basis. The COLAs can either adjust the minimum, midpoint, and maximums on each pay grade, or alternatively, they can be used to move people further along within the grade. This flexibility would allow you to give different COLA percentages to different classifications, such as your lower-paid personnel. And that's something that several of you have commented on. So if you want to do that, you don't want to adjust the grade, every grade on there by 2%. What you want to do is move people within the existing grade by whatever percentage you're going to give them. Is everybody...
How would we do that? How do we execute it?
Well, basically, what it would take is, we would do some analysis for you, you give us some idea of where you want the cutoff point, on which grade do you want as the cutoff point, and every grade there and below would get a higher COLA than what other people are getting.
So, I mean, the discussion that I've been hearing is that if someone's receiving 2%, that makes 30,000. If somebody's receiving 2% that makes 30,000, you know, that's someone that's making 130,000 might not need to receive 2%. And so my question is, can staff put together that kind of recommendations on how we can... I don't think we need to randomly try to pick, you know, what that looks like. I think we need to see some models on how that could look in the future. So if I'm going to support this tonight, I'd kind of like to see if we can give some direction later. And I may be getting ahead of myself.
Well, changes to COLA are not part of this recommendation.
Right.
No, they're not. All I wanted to do was to explain to you that this plan has a lot of flexibility.
Gives you some...
Gives you a lot of options on how you would go about adjusting pay in the future.
Do we have...
You already have your automatic COLA, which will kick in on April 1. So you have that. I guess, Commissioner Belcher, my suggestion...
Turn your speaker.
It's on. My suggestion is that...
I couldn't hear you.
Is that you look at, if you were going to do anything like that, as part of your next budget, because they're already going to get increased...
Next year.
In April. Well, that'll give you time also, is you're getting ready to hire a new manager, hopefully in January or February. They in turn are going to turn around and hire a new HR Director, and that would give them time to formulate where they would like to go and recommend to you some of these options.
Yeah, I just don't, I want to make sure that we don't lose that conversation, that somebody's working on it, you know, since the Commission is talking about it.
And that's why I included it in the memo, because I wanted y'all to be aware that the way you would go about doing the differentials on COLAs would be, do not change the grades across the board, but move people within the existing grade. And what that does, it just moves them further along in the grade that they're in.
Right, and, you know, your lower grades are lower numbers. Your higher grades are usually the higher numbers.
Right.
So that's a way to break down the plan. And reading it and the different, where it starts, I think with, I made notes on this, job grade 54. Now, my question is, what, and I've heard a lot of different answers, what is the living wage in Buncombe County?
I think y'all have been using $13 or $13.50.
Well, why would we have job grade 54, 55, 56, and 57? The minimum in those grades, if I figured it right, is below $13.
Well, remember, this was not geared for the living wage. This was geared to market conditions. So that would be a choice for y'all to make if you want to pay above what the market condition is. What this did is compared to what other jurisdictions are paying for comparable jobs. So that's the job market. If you, as a public policy, want to pay above that and say, we want to have the living wage, you can certainly do that. But I just wanted you to understand that there's nothing incorrect about the plan. It was geared to determined market.
Okay. Well, the reason I say that, if we're requiring new businesses coming in and pushing, you know, as a living wage from the county for everybody to pay that, and we're not setting the example, I have a problem with that.
Well, those new industries, they're paying those wages because they have to, to get the caliber of employee with the skills that they have. Let me finish.
Let me just, we talked for years about being living wage employers. So, and not to interrupt, but when I see this, I realize it's been a sham because we're not living wage employers across the board, and we have some employees that are working for Buncombe County through these salaries would qualify for assistance. And I don't mean to interrupt, but I think that's what Commissioner Whiteside is talking about.
We do have a policy.
Well, I understand that, and what I'm saying is, if you want to take these up, you can do that. Okay? But this study was to determine the market on this. So if that's what you want to do, that's fine, and you can certainly do that. The offset of that is, is that you're also, but I just want to say this for the record, you're subject to the criticism that you're overpaying for those jobs relative to the job market.
We understand that. Well, I think we should look at that, because I believe we do have a policy that, I think it was adopted even before I was on the County Commission.
Yeah.
I've heard it ever since I've been on.
We should look at that and confirm what the current rate is considered to be. There's a group that works on this, and I think we've always followed their analysis on that with the Just Economics Organization that looks at some of those statistics. So we should look at it and look at our policy, and if we're not, if there's some classifications that are below that, we should follow up on that.
Well, my suggestion would be to go ahead and adopt this tonight, subject to, let us bring back to you, and you can correct those.
Because insurance factors into that, into that, too.
It does. I believe, unless they've changed the way they look at it recently, the Just Economics has always said, there's sort of two numbers. What is living wage if the physician has insurance and if the physician doesn't have insurance?
Yeah, we have those numbers from...
We do have insurance, of course.
We have the benefit.
Yeah, I think, Al, the Economic Development Council has those numbers, because we use that in looking at those. So we can certainly review that. We'll have that back to you on December 4.
We can use Google.
Thank you. Thank you. Good questions. Any other questions? Or is there a motion? Are we ready to make a motion?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution adopting a new personnel position classification and pay plan. That is with the understanding we're going to look at some of the lower-paid positions, make sure it's also consistent with the county's living wage policy. So we'll revisit that, make sure that that's, we're also following that policy. Further discussion?
We need to, just a question, sort of a process question, would we need to capture that intention in the language of the resolution?
No.
Or is it...
You put it in...
It's already a policy.
Well, you've already made it in the motion. So it'll be in the minutes that you approved it's subject to that.
Yeah.
And we'll be back to you in two weeks with it.
Yeah, and if we need to do any tweaks, we can follow up on that.
Just making sure we're doing a good process.
Good question. All right.
I think they've done a good job with it, yeah.
Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? Sir?
I'm one of those people that's a little bit anal. I kind of look at details. By the way, MIT says it's 1182 for our living wage.
Sir, excuse me, could you share your name and where you're from? I forgot to ask that earlier.
Tim Wallis.
Thank you.
Okay. One of the things I noticed was the library department seems to be lacking in the Exhibit 4B analysis. We only have two levels in there, the top director, the bottom pages. There's nothing, and I read that it was based upon an analysis looking at like job titles. And that's where I think we might have a problem. I looked at Mecklenburg County, which I was able to access through the Charlotte Observer's website, and I found out that Mecklenburg, which has a cost of living of 110.6 compared to our 114.3, has 33 managers in the library. By the way, they're three times our size. 33 managers averaging $74,000, three supervisors averaging $57,000, and 71 librarians averaging $56,000. When, oh, by the way, in the BLS number for librarians in North Carolina with a .943, cost of living is $50,000, so that's about right. Buncombe County has no managers. They have no supervisors. The number-two highest salary in our library system is $57,000. That's below the librarians in Mecklenburg. That means roughly 107 of their employees make more than our number-two. Divided by 3, 33 make more than our number-two. Our librarian managers are called librarian-ones. They're not called library managers, so you can't do a comparison. They make around $44,000. That's far less than Mecklenburg. They have all the responsibilities of building, staff, program, collection, and they're making $30,000 less than Mecklenburg. Our libraries, members that handle the children's programs and the adult programs are called, well, they're going to be called, library specialists. They average $33,000. A librarian, which is what they should be called, in Mecklenburg is at 57. We have 30 managers in other departments in Buncombe. We have 43 supervisors. The third-largest department has none. I think that there's a title issue going on here, and maybe we should be looking at the job descriptions and the titles, as well as what people are paid. I'm running out of time here, so I'll just stop right there. It just looks like there's an issue.
All right, thank you for your comments. Anybody else? All right, bringing it back to the Board. We've got a motion and a second, further discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Can we take 10 minutes?
No.
We're pretty close.
Are you sure?
We're pretty close.
All right.
Our fate is in our own hands.
I'm going to take it.
The next item on our agenda is consideration of a policy to require a public comment period at the beginning of each meeting held by one of our public boards and commissions. And so this is just a discussion item for the Board. There was a question raised by an engaged citizen in our community around the fact that there's not a public comment period, at least by formal policy, at our different boards and commission meetings. So I thought it was a fair question for us to discuss whether or not we would want to create such a policy. And, you know, just to kind of share my thoughts on this, I don't think we necessarily need to have the same public comment procedures we have for our formal county commissioner meetings, but I think we all agree public comment's valuable, and if folks take the time to go to one of these citizen public meetings, it'd be a good idea to give them a chance to share their thoughts. So I guess my question to the Board is whether or not we might want to create a policy such that at the beginning of public meeting, board and commission meeting, we should have a three-minute public comment period, and then also at the end of the meeting, have another public comment period. So basically, if folks come, they could share their thoughts about items on the agenda, and then at the end of the meeting, if they want to share any thoughts about, you know, hey, the public business that's been transacted, they want to share their thoughts on it, they could do that. So that's one way we could do it, but I'm certainly open to other ideas. Any thoughts from commissioners who might want to comment? And my sense is that we don't have to vote on this tonight, but if there's an apparent approach that the Commission likes, then we could write that up and vote on it at a subsequent meeting.
Honestly, you have different boards, and I know we're probably over them when we pick them. But we need to let these boards, they're kind of be over theirself without us interfering, is the way I look at it. You know, we've done what we've done. Now, you know, give them an idea to do what they'd like to do. You know, somebody come up with some ideas. The board members from the other boards, if they want to come to us and discuss it, I'd rather see that. That way, we have an idea where they'd like to go. Instead, it's just someone saying, this is what you're going to do.
All right.
I support adding a public comment period and just having that be a general policy across boards. Kind of creates another channel, another way for folks to show up and express their opinions and engage, and I think creates more opportunity for those community connections. So how often that will be utilized, time will tell. But I think having that built in is an important feature of any public meeting.
I apologize, I was gone for a minute. But so how long, so this is for individual boards, how long are they going to have to talk?
So my suggestion was, at the beginning of each board or commission meeting, there'd be an opportunity for public comment, three minutes, no longer than three minutes. And then at the end of the meeting, there would be another opportunity for public comment up to three minutes. But that the boards and commissions wouldn't be required, you know, in all the individual decisions they make throughout the meeting to, you know, continuously take public comment in the same way we do here. But so basically, kind of, there's a window at the beginning and end of the meeting where folks who attend could share their ideas.
So you're basically adding public comment to the beginning? Is that it?
And the end.
We have it at the end now.
Yeah, but we also have it throughout our meetings on any decisions that are made.
Okay, so I'm confused.
It's just for commissions.
Like boards and commissions.
Not for us.
Yeah, for boards and commissions. Okay.
Like MSD has it, you know.
Okay, I'm on the same page now. I'm with you. And I think we need to do, it's good for transparency. And, you know, any boards or commission that we have, let's face it, any taxpayer or any person who lives in the county should be able to voice their opinion. And I've heard from several people about two of our boards that they wish they could, you know, voice their opinion during the meeting, you know, of things that's going on. But I think it's only, you know, in the true sense of transparency. So what boards aren't allowing public comment?
HHS doesn't have public comment.
I don't think the library board does. Well, I mean, y'all may be right, but I haven't, I don't think I've been to a board meeting where they haven't had public comment.
I think some do, some don't.
HHS doesn't have that.
Some do and some don't, yeah. We need to be consistent with that, though. So can we require that? That they have public comment? We create the boards. So is that a yes? I would think so. Mr. Fruit?
The requirement centers on whether or not it's a public body. For instance, if you asked George and Jim and I to look into something or have a meeting, we're by definition not a public body and wouldn't require public comment. But if you're talking about boards and commissions that this board appoints, then yes, I could see that you could put in a general requirement for public comment, just for that outlet, but not more strict than what this board would have of itself, which would be one public comment per month at board meetings. And also remember that I think some flexibility might be in order in terms of what kind of parameters might be appropriate for any given board. Some boards, as long as you have one side and the other have opportunity, then you're okay. If you have 100 people here against an item and one person for, you don't have to give the one person half an hour and the other people half an hour. It could be two minutes each before or at the end of any meeting. It could be two minutes each before or at the end of any meeting. So there are a number of ways to do it, and I would just suggest some flexibility. The only boards that we require a public comment for now are the planning board and board of adjustment, and that's worked fairly well.
I think as long as strict guidelines are derived, because, you know, they're volunteer boards. I mean, we get elected, we choose to put ourselves in these seats, and I think as long as there are strict parameters of what can be said and.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is that these are volunteer boards, and, you know, and I don't know, I don't want to do anything that's going to make it harder to get people to serve on those boards. Do we really think we need public comment at every board, every one? I mean.
You know, if somebody bothers to go, why shouldn't they be allowed to share their two cents? I guess is my question. Like, why would it make sense to exclude any board from that basic idea?
I don't think we should exclude them, you know. Do we require it, and how do we do that? I'm thinking of the logistics of it. Do we just do it? I mean.
There's, we're not voting on this, so there will be no public comment on this item.
Taken without irony.
But we do have public comment at the, we, look, we do, we are gonna have public comment on, at the end of this meeting, so anybody who, we're not voting on this, but there will be public comment, which you can certainly speak to this issue on during that public comment period.
I can share, oh, sorry, Bonnie.
Go ahead.
Well, we both sit on MPO, and there's a public comment period at the beginning.
And the end.
And the end, yeah. And I think it functions really well, and as is the case here, it's a, you know, it's another way for people to share what's on their mind, and it also helps to kind of raise that flag around, you know, some issues really touch people's lives closely, or there's a lot at stake around certain issues, and it's one of the ways we make sure we sort of have an understanding of that. So just, George, hopefully to assuage some of your concerns, it typically moves pretty swiftly, and people respect the time limits, and I've never seen it go off the rails. So I think it can be done really, really well.
I mean, as at Sandy mush, a board meeting in Sandy mush last week, and they had public comment at the end. You know, so my question is that it's a motion to create a policy to require public comment period at the beginning of each meeting, and, you know, do you do it at the beginning? Do you do it at the end? Or should we, is there, is there a better way to achieve this? Should we be sending, should we send something to them and tell them that we encourage them to do that and, or see who's not doing it, you know, rather than creating a policy that requires them to do it? Because I haven't been to one that isn't doing it. I mean, I just haven't.
Well, again, this is just, you know, this is just kind of a.
I think these are older things for you all to consider.
It is.
Take up the next one.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Jim.
Just as a point to make sure that whatever policy you put into place, to make sure that if you do allow public comment, not all of the boards that you appoint are policymaking boards. So for example, Health and Human Services and the Library Board do not set policy. So I wouldn't want the public to not avail themselves of this platform as well, thinking that what they were establishing with the Health and Human Services Board or the Library Board was establishing policy. You're still the one that would establish a policy, and they're, both of those boards are advisory. The Library Board only has the ability to set fines, and otherwise, they don't set policy. So I would, whatever you do, just to make sure that people understand that they should still avail themselves of you as policymakers.
Yep. I think that's a good point, although I would, you know, I would argue that even for those that don't have direct decision-making authority, you know, they do play a role in planning, and probably public input opportunities are good there. Well, again, I, you know, I appreciate the other folks who have to put on the agenda. I think this has been good, some good questions have come up about, you know, because a lot of boards do do this, so it's not like nobody does. So I don't have any other questions for now. I'd like to kind of just personally kind of think about the questions that got raised and input, and maybe look at, maybe go through a list of looking at which boards do already take public comment, which ones don't, and think about whether bringing a new policy forward might make sense in the near future. So any other, any other comments on this before we move on to the next item? All right, thank you, everyone. And again, Donna was joking, but we will have public comment, and if you have thoughts on this, we welcome them in just a couple of minutes. All right. Okay, next item on the agenda is consideration of a contract for CADMS for up to $100,000, 50% of which will be paid by the City of Asheville, 50% by Buncombe County, to develop a renewable energy plan. This is another item that we had a presentation on at a previous meeting and discussion, so, and already voted to approve up to this amount. So really, this is about selecting this specific organization to carry out the work, and Jeremiah LaRoy will share a few comments.
Okay, good evening. So the county solicited responses to an RFP for Renewable Energy Planning Services in order to develop an actionable plan to address the 100% renewable goal passed by the commission as a part of setting the, you know, setting the county's strategic priorities. We had five qualified firms that responded, which we were very happy with. Selection committee was formed. That consisted of city and county sustainability staff, facilities and maintenance staff, as well as some finance staff, because we wanted a diverse set of eyes to read over these proposals and select the qualified firm. After reviewing the proposals and interviewing candidates, the committee unanimously agreed that the CADMS group was far and away the top choice. So what you have on your agenda tonight is a negotiated agreement between the county and CADMS to provide those planning services, the goal of which will be to develop this roadmap to reach our 100% renewable goal with concrete, actionable steps that we can take, and just as important, the financial impacts of those steps, and, you know, to essentially create a plan that continues to guide this work into the future. So policy changes, site assessments for potential renewables, and how we can incorporate this as a thought process in how we do business going forward. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, I've got one. On the attachment B, so we're supposed to, $100,000, which is $50,000, counting $50,000.
Correct.
So when I look at the numbers, only $25,000 of that is for a renewable energy plan. And site identification, I'm assuming that is identifying the sites that.
Yeah, that can be looking at anything from, yeah, from publicly-owned facilities to potential public-private partnerships, just doing a total site assessment of all potential available county land or facilities that could incorporate renewables.
So the impact assessment, $19,000, did you vet that, or who's?
The entire committee did.
So the committee did that?
Correct, yeah. And again, that was, so the committee consisted of sustainability staff for the city and the county, as well as facilities and maintenance for the city and the county, as well as some of the finance staff. She's no longer with the county, but Jennifer DuRette, who was formerly our controller, was a part of that selection committee as well.
All right. Any other questions?
Is it, and I might ask someone more experienced than myself, is it uncommon for, I mean, some of these amounts just look excessive to me, so, you know, just look at, you know, maybe understanding them more, I'm not against them.
Sure.
But, you know, I'm trying to understand, you know, why the plan is only one-fourth of the actual, and maybe it's because there's so much legwork that's got to be done, I don't know.
I think that, yes.
Part of it is that's actually writing the report and things like that, but a lot of this is having stakeholder workshops, reviews of policies and strategies that you might look at, impact assessments, then they've got to go through and do site identification of where you might put certain facilities and things like that. So all of that has to be done before you could sit down and actually draft the report and compile that and that sort of thing.
So, George, you don't think the Schedule B is, you know, out of line?
No, I looked at everything, and I will say this, we did not include it, but CADMS had about a 20-page background on them. They're a very reputable firm, and they have a tremendous amount of experience in these types of plans. So I felt very comfortable that they had selected a good firm.
So what's the next step on this, once, I mean, when do they present the plan to us, or?
Absolutely, that will absolutely be the next step, is that once a plan is developed, we will come before the board with recommendations, you know, recommendations on potential implementation of renewables, costs associated, recommendations for potential policy changes that we can help implement to, you know, move the ball forward with renewable energy. So yeah, that's absolutely the next step will be, to present that to the board and allow us to have that, help us make the decisions going forward as to how we plan to reach the goal.
And the term of the contract says from October to June, so we're behind a little bit in getting it approved, so that means probably July, August, you should be getting the report.
Someone make a motion to approve?
All right, there's a motion and a second to approve. Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All right. Before we vote, I do want to disclose I work in the solar energy industry, but I do not do any work with Buncombe County or the City of Asheville government, and will continue to not do so in the future, but I did want to just put that on the record.
I didn't know you did that.
It was brought up at another meeting, you probably forgot about it, but anyway.
If I could make one quick point of clarification, Mr. Yelton was kind enough to bring this to my attention. As a part of the budget amendments that are further down the agenda, there's a budget amendment to add the $50,000 from the City of Asheville to our budget to pay for their portion of it. It is not an additional $50,000, it does not change the total amount being paid, and that maybe wasn't super clear, reading through the agenda tonight, so I just wanted to make that public, that is just simply to add Asheville's portion of the total cost of the plan.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
That saves a comment.
So does that need to be in the, how do we need to make the motion?
Well.
Yeah, I know, but did I do it, I mean, all I did was make a motion.
You did it right.
We did it right. You were in a hurry to get to that K card, I can tell.
I think we're good, I think we're good.
All right.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Now, that was, we was gonna give up to $50,000, right? It could not go over.
That's right.
And max.
That's right.
And, I mean, looking at these numbers, ain't it a coincidence that this come up to exactly $100,000?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, to the penny.
That's the way it works. Oh.
Part of that is, is they don't come to you with a recommendation until they have a pretty good idea of what it's going.
To the dollar or something, but to the penny is.
Right. Well, there is a contingency item in.
So, you know, to Commissioner Presley's point, you know, the other thing, you know, if you look at that, you know, there's not a lot of money on their expenses, so I don't know if they, because it runs this amount, do they limit themselves at $2,700 in expenses? Does that cause it to come up that even amount, or are they just trying to get all the money?
So quickly, to address your point, their budget proposal to us was $97,000 and some change. The $2,200-plus that's in there is a contingency, is just that. It's a contingency, doesn't necessarily mean that money's going to be spent. So their budget was slightly less than $100,000, but we have $100,000, and so we added that money as contingency, that their budget is less than that. So in terms of expenses, they actually have a local presence, they have an office here in Asheville, so I don't think there's a ton in additional travel expenses and things of that nature that they anticipate spending.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Any further comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, next item is FY 2019 budget amendment summary. We asked for it.
Oh, we did, okay.
Yeah.
Good evening, commissioners. So the first item on your budget amendment summary is just that, referencing Jeremiah's presentation with CADMS. The, we are requesting that you approve and enable us to budget the $50,000 worth of revenue from the City of Asheville with the corresponding increase to the $50,000 of expense for their 50 share of the inter-local agreement. So that's the first budget amendment request.
You want to, can we approve all of them as a group, or do we need to just vote on each one?
Well, one of them's pretty big. Seven million.
Let's just, let's just knock them out one at a time. Well, the problem is, why don't you go through and present each one, and then we'll decide whether to approve it as a group or vote on each one?
Sure. So the second budget amendment request, again, references your previous meeting where the commission approved, based on your commitment to early childhood development, funding in the total amount of $200,000 to assist with the construction and expansion of Swanonoa Valley Childcare Council, doing business as Children and Friends Enrichment Center. So please remember that we had $79,000 in our current education program support budget, pairing that with a request of $121,000 from the general government contingency to make up to the $200,000 to meet that, to meet that approval.
Okay.
All right.
Quick clarifying question on that, is that funding be administered directly to the nonprofit?
That was my understanding.
Okay, that had just been raised when we last met, just clarifying that. Thanks.
Thank you. So the third budget amendment request is in reference to $76,487 as a request that comes from our Department of Health and Human Services, specifically the Department of Public Health. The department made application for federal funds that were being awarded through the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services in an effort to continue opioid awareness, in addition to bringing local services for harm reduction in our community. I know that you've heard Dr. Jennifer Mullendorf with the Department of Public Health speak to that issue, and program staff are here to answer any questions if you have any about that. So the request is to be able to budget the revenue for the federal dollars and the associated expenses for the areas that are outlined for expenditure.
Okay. So I'll make a motion that we approve these three budget amendments, including the $50,000 for the Sustainability Office, just discussed, the $121,000 for the pre-K project, and $76,487 for the opioid mitigation item. All right, there's a motion and a second, further discussion. Any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much.
Got one more.
We have one more.
What'd they miss?
It's a big.
Oh, yeah, not on this, but on this school, yeah, sure. Okay, and are you presenting this, too?
I do believe I am. Unless anybody else would like to come forward.
Nobody else is walking up here, so keep going.
All right, great.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. So previously, at the request of our interim county manager, Mr. Wood, on October 10th, he did put forward a memo to you as a board, making you aware that he would like to request from the School Capital Fund Commission the ability to approve $400,000 for a school safety security assessment, in addition to $75,400 on behalf of Asheville City Schools and Buncombe County Schools to conduct an engineering study in relationship to radio installation around signals within those schools. So this amendment that that board, the School Capital. So, this amendment that that board, the School Capital Fund Commission, did approve that request to be paid with the Article 39. The School Capital Fund Commission, in its regular course of business, additionally has approved and is recommending the other projects that are outlined for your approval for Article 39 to be used to fund these particular projects.
Just for the record, you want to go ahead and read those?
I certainly can.
Just go ahead and read them.
I sure can. So, that will be, so the revenues for those particular projects that I will review, $2,410,400 is anticipated to be revenue from bond proceeds, in addition to $855,679, and another $4,685,000, all from bond proceeds are the revenues. The projects is the security assessment for $400,000, radio upgrade engineering study for $75,400, radio upgrade equipment and install, $1,935,000, Hall Fletcher roof replacements in Asheville City Schools, $428,375, Hall Fletcher restroom renovations, Asheville City Schools, $427,304, Erwin kitchen renovations, $1,950,000, Hall Creek and Fairview Elementary School renovations, $675,000, Sand Hill Venable Campus repaving and road construction, or road repair, maybe, $200,000, Lee Sester Elementary School, the HVAC and Energy Controls, $875,000, and Inca High School track and field replacement for $985,000.
Thank you. And just a comment, as was pointed out, these are all recommended by the School Capital Fund Commission, which includes representatives from the city school system and the county school system. And so, they, these were recommended at the last meeting, and, you know, and basically reflect the highest priority projects identified by both school districts, which is inclusive of the security studies and security improvements. The rest of these projects have been on both schools' capital fund project list for some time, and we're just been working our way through them to get down to these, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments on the motion from the public? All in favor from the county commission, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Thank you so much. All right. We now come to our board appointments. And the first of which is the...
Wait a minute.
I'm sorry, what?
I have to do wrong?
No, you're good.
Oh, wait. Yeah, I think we're ready. Let's do that now. Ron Payne, good evening. Good to see you. Thank you for joining us at this meeting. And so, we did, by consensus, add to the agenda at the beginning of this meeting consideration of a financial settlement with Michael Green.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, fellow Commissioners, I'm here this evening to make a recommendation to you as to a resolution of the civil lawsuit currently against Michael Green, but only against Michael Green. And just for background information, you may recall that Mr. Green, along with his mother, was indicted back in April of this year. And if you read the indictment, the allegations against Mr. Green specifically allege misuse of a P card and other things that total approximately $7,500. It was discovered that while he had not been indicted on other matters, that the total amount that Buncombe County was probably out by his misdeeds was approximately $38,500. A little over $1,500 had previously been paid when it was first reported back, and I think it was 2008. I have reached a tentative agreement subject to your approval with his attorney that they will pay $40,000 to Buncombe County. You may also recall, he was one of the folks who also received insurance policies, but he surrendered or signed those to the county, and that was used in part to get the $2,088,000, which we got back from the insurance company, which leaves us about $222,000 short of being made whole on that $2.31 million that was wire transferred out of here to buy the various policies, including those on Wanda Green. Wanda Green, of course, had cashed her policies in, and we were unable to obtain an assignment of those, but we are still pursuing our civil remedies against her in the first lawsuit, as I call it, the one that was a result of the first indictment against she and her son, and in the second lawsuit against her, Mandy Stone, John Creighton, Joe Wiseman, and Mr. Wiseman's company. But I would recommend this will only result in a limited release of Mr. Green. In other words, should something else be discovered that is not specifically referenced in the release, we would be free to pursue Mr. Green in a legal action if we so chose to do so. But I believe that the $40,000, along with the surrender of the life insurance monies we got, would make Buncombe County whole insofar as possible for the misdeeds of Michael Green. I would recommend that to you as your attorney.
I'd like a motion to approve it.
Second.
All right. There is a motion and a second to support a financial settlement of $40,000 with Michael Green. Further discussion? Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on the motion? All right. I'm supportive of the recommendation. Mr. Payne, I want to say thank you for your work on this, and this is a, this is an ongoing matter, as you described, and we have, we are glad to see that the county has already received over the $2 million in the settlement from the insurance company. And this is another step in terms of our goal, which is to make the county taxpayers fully whole for the funds that were misspent. And in the big scheme of things, this is one of the somewhat smaller items in there, but it's an important one that each of the folks who misappropriated funds take steps to repay that. So, I'm supportive as well. Any other comments on the motion? Okay. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay. We now come to board appointments.
Let's smoke these out.
And the first one on our list is the...
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
It's got on here again, some recommendations, and I thought last time we had talked about that not being on there.
No, what we discussed is, it's only on ours. It's on yours. It's not on...
But it's not on the website.
It's not on the website.
It's not on the website.
So, I think I'd said something about that. I didn't want people to think that we'd already decided.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so.
This is the compromise we have reached.
Which it is.
On the first item is the Historic Resources Commission. There's one vacancy. Unless somebody wants to argue for interviews, why don't we just start over on Commissioner Friar's side, and each Commissioner identify which of the candidates you prefer to support.
Go to the other side.
Okay.
I'll start it.
Okay, go ahead.
Lorraine.
Gail Lazarus.
Lazarus.
Lorraine.
Lazarus.
Lazarus.
Okay. Have Lazarus received four votes?
Yes.
Okay. The next committee is the African-American Heritage Commission. There's one reappointment and two vacancies, and we do have the correct number of people to fill all of those. So, I'll make a motion, we reappoint Sasha Mitchell and appoint Lynn Smith and Catherine Mitchell.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? On the County Board of Adjustments, I would personally support doing interviews for this. This is just, you know, these are all important, but the Board of Adjustments is, you know, one of the most important boards, so I would, I'd like to interview the applicants for this.
So, I'm pretty, I'm actually very familiar with one of these that are on here, and I would like to make a recommendation for Josh Holmes. I know his family, he's non-controversial, and I think he would do an excellent job. So, I would like to make a motion for Josh Holmes.
And I'd like to second it.
All right.
If we're voting now...
If we're going to go ahead and vote on it, let's just go down, each Commissioner identify who you prefer, and we'll see who gets the most votes.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Presley?
Josh Holmes.
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 All right. Holmes got it. The Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have one vacancy, we actually have three vacancies for different positions.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, I think the way we should look at this is, we have specific positions we need to appoint for, so why don't we first take up the substance abuse professional position? There's only one candidate that meets that criteria, which is Kendra Queen Taylor.
Yeah. So, I move for Kendra Taylor.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The next is for the youth position. There are three candidates who meet that criteria, Shelby Clark, Deaneville, Celestine, and William David.
Shelby Clark.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any... Yep. Go ahead.
I do want to say aye, but I serve on JCPC, and I just want to note that I think it's very cool that we have multiple youth applying.
It is.
For these positions. I think, I think we're allowed to have two youth, well, I'll have to go back and consult the bylaws, but anyhow, I'm going to follow up with other folks on JCPC and just see if there might be some ways to follow up with the youth who applied, but perhaps do not get selected tonight.
Sure. Absolutely.
I have to put a plug in for Deaneville, William David.
Yeah, I would like, I'm going to try to reach out to each of the youth applicants and just see if there's a way to get them connected and engaged, just because...
Do better than wait over?
Well, I don't...
I mean, one of their...
Our meeting got rescheduled last week because of the ice storm that was coming, so I don't know if there might have been a, I don't want to interfere with the flow of things, but it just, we don't, we don't often see multiple youth applying for board positions.
Sure don't. I agree. Well, I mean, we could, we could go ahead and do the general position, because there's only one there, and if y'all want to do something later, I mean, it's up to y'all.
Give you time.
Well, here's the other thought. We, I mean, the general position could be anybody, so it could actually be another youth.
Well, it might be. I was trying to read through...
We have to appoint one youth, but another youth could fill the general position.
And I think Mr. Hanlon might be a youth also.
Really?
Based on reading his application, the person who's being, who's being considered for the general position, I think. He references Asheville High School's student government in the past two years and will be again this coming year. So, we actually have a lot of youth interest in this, so I don't want to complicate something that has been thought through by other people, but I just wanted to raise a flag around.
Well, why don't we go ahead and point, someone to the youth position on the, which we have the motion for? So, let's go ahead and finish the vote for, that's for Shelby Clark, right? Okay. All in favor of Shelby Clark, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we do have one other appointment, and it is general, but that means basically any of the candidates could apply for this. So, just because it's got the general position there doesn't mean the other folks couldn't fill it, too, although it sounds like, is Joe Hanlon a youth candidate as well? And if so, why weren't they identified as a youth position?
I think I've met him at meetings, and, I mean, any youth coming to these meetings is to be applauded, so I certainly don't want to...
So, Commissioner Jasmine, you're on that board, right?
Yeah, and our meeting was, our next meeting is on November 30th. It was just rescheduled.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I think this is how they came from the actual board. They came, recommended for these categories, so that's why they are on this list, recorded that way. So, I'm not sure if he is a youth, but that's how they recommended him.
Okay.
Thanks for that clarification. And again, I don't want to interfere with what leadership of the board has.
Well, make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for Joe Hanlon.
All right.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Great. Thanks, everybody. Oh, wait, 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 there's more. The Homeless Initiative, we've got one vacancy and two reappointments. I'll make a motion to reappoint April Burgess Johnson and Rachel Nygaard.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. And then, we have one vacancy.
Third point, Eileen McMinn.
I would like to, Bethany Brown.
All right. Let's just go, let's go down. No, no, but since if there's a difference, it's fine. Let's just go. These are both great candidates, so both would be great. Commissioner Fri, why don't we, we'll start with Ellen. She's already cast a nod to Eileen McMinn, and then, Mr. Whitesides?
McMinn.
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 Brown.
All right. McMinn has got more. And last one, Adult Care Home Committee.
Sharon White.
All in favor of Sharon White, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you to everyone who applied for these boards and commissions. We appreciate your work with these community boards. All right. We will now take public comment on any matters that we have not already held public comment on earlier this evening. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak with us? You've got three minutes. Please share your name and where you live. Mr. Yelton.
Don Yelton, Jupiter, North Carolina. First and foremost, on public comment, you missed an opportunity, because what I was going to say a while ago, Brownie, is any commission or board appointed by these commissioners up here have the same power, I think legally, as the commissioners. And you can override anything they do, or they may have to bring it to you for final approval. But they should operate by the same rules and regulations that this board operates by. Why not? And I suggest, and Brownie, that you take a three-minute comment on items that they vote on, because then if there's two sides there on that issue, they'll argue without at that point, and then you take public comment at the end, and there'll be very little public comment at the end, because everybody would address their concerns during those board meetings. And I don't see why you don't do that, because I do respect you for doing that, okay? And I think you need to consider that. Number two, I think in your own minutes here, when you get to public comment and there is none, you say there is none. Because I was talking to your secretary a while ago, if you get down to like the 30th, and Jerry Rice wasn't here, and I wasn't here, so I figured there was no comment, but the section, public comment, was on the item. So, if there is no comment, state there's no comment, so you will know that there was no public comment if you look back at those minutes later on in the year. Also, you need to be sure that all the boards and commissions that you appoint take minutes. At one time in Buncombe County, you used to have minutes, but I bet you right now, if I started asking you for minutes for your boards, you don't have them all. You need to find out if they're keeping minutes. They are required by law, if I'm not mistaken, to keep minutes. And number two, the last thing, the, there was an item on the agenda today that was taken off that said there should be special consideration for development on severe slopes, such as i.e. making 100 acres and only developing 15 of that 100, rather than saying one house per three acres. And it's correct, because when you say one house per three acres, you have roads all over the mountains, and what's the worst cause of pollution? Brownie, you know it, it's roads. So, that resolution, y'all need to look at it, it's in your agenda, and read the benefits of it, because I can scientifically prove to you that that was a good resolution, because it would have opened up the possibility of designing a project for the exact location, not just some one item fit...
And after Mr. Rice, are there any other members of the public who wish to comment? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to personally thank each one of you commissioners for your support during my wife's sickness and her death, and that meant a lot to me and my family. That's about all I can get out on that one. Couple of things on public comment on these boards, I think it's really, really important. I've been to a lot of them, and I've been shut down, a lot of them not getting to speak, and this has been over the years. It's not just been one or two years. So, I think it's really important. Give you a good example on the DSS board, they had public comment at one time, but it was kind of like choose yes or no or maybe, and you might get in if you know the rules, or you might get in if you got by a certain person. So, they watched pretty close who come in. So, I don't think that's the way it ought to operate. If a state's going to run the DSS board and the operation, there ought to be a way of the public being able to voice their opinions or concerns and being heard, and maybe your director can make some good changes within the department based on some of the things that he might hear, because everybody's getting up, talking about DSS ain't a bunch of crazy people. There's some real deep concerns here that the state ain't even doing their job. You can look at the county out in Cherokee and see what the state should have had oversight of, and you can understand that Buncombe County has some problems too, and they're, they're not little problems. There's quite a few big problems within DSS and the establishment, as well as the judicial system over here in the big story building over here, and the family court system is just as bad as anything you could find. When you negate your responsibility on the court system and, and not be able to take your face and your child, your parents, or your children to the court and be heard, and it gets stalled in the family court system where you don't have a jury trial, there's something wrong with that. So, that's what I'm speaking of. It's over your head, probably what I'm saying, but Judge Payne back here, he understands those legal matters, and so does the other judges that I've talked to. And don't ever think they ain't some big ones. So, if we can flush these things out in these meetings where we can get some ideas, it's, I ain't picking on DSS board, I'm giving you an example, because some of these things are very serious. It needs to be talked about, and then you ain't going to be a Cherokee County getting into trouble. The other thing is, public, back here in the back, I'm, I'm really ashamed to say that I'm being rude back there, but I'm telling you, you need to do something about these mics, and it's been said over and over and over, I don't want to be rude, but I can't hear back there.
We get it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to the front.
Okay. All right. Yes, sir.
Tim Wallace from Fairview. On public comment, the boards and commissions are a direct conduit to you folks. They do recommend such things as budgets, salaries, so that makes public comment at that level paramount. Also, I would prefer it to be in the same structure you folks have, which, by the way, is fantastic. Anytime you come to an older new business vote, we all get the comment. At the end of the meeting, we get the comment. At the beginning of the meeting, we're dependent upon what the agenda says. This past month, I went to a meeting where all the agenda said was setting board meeting dates. What ended up happening was they moved, they went from monthly meetings to bi-monthly meetings, from meeting at 6:30 to meeting at 5:00, totally eliminating over half the people that attend those meetings, because they have to work to 6:00. No public comment was allowed, and now, boom, the people are out. And worse, they're frustrated, because they think that that board didn't care about them. We don't want that. We want people to be, because I don't think the board would have done that move had they known the situation was going to exist. If people had stood up and say, hey, I worked till 6:00, I won't be able to be here. At the end of the meeting, the board actually thanked everyone for their attendance, regular attendance at meetings, and they had just eliminated their ability to attend future meetings. So, that's why I think that even with votes on old and new business, it's necessary. And at the end of the meeting, if there's been discussion like this here, we all were able to discuss this, now I can give my opinion. And I will be perfectly candid, I am really impressed that I'm able to do that, and that I'm able to have you guys listen, the county manager, the assistant manager, it's a real blessing to all of us. And also, one other thing I noticed is that some of the boards can change their own bylaws. I kind of think that that's kind of an interesting one. I would prefer to see it that they can recommend a change to the bylaw to the county commission, and then the county commission can concur. And it's just another thought. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Okay. Is there a need for a closed session?
Yes.
Okay. To consult with an attorney, I assume. Is that right, Ms. Hockaday?
It is.
He hit the billboard.
Okay. All in favor of...
I think I need to state it. We need a motion and a vote to enter into a closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A3 to discuss a legal matter with retained counsel pertaining to the following cases, County of Buncombe versus Wanda Skilington-Green-Michael Green, 18 CVS 77, and County of Buncombe versus Wanda Skilington-Green-Amanda Louise Stone-John Creighton-Joe Wiseman and Company, 18 CVS 4206.
Okay.
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. There's a motion and a second. Before we go into closed session, I just need to make a brief announcement, which I should have done before. December 3rd at 5:00 p.m., the county commission will hold a swearing-in session for Commissioner-Elect at 200 College Street, Room 326, here in downtown Asheville, and then on December 4th at 5:00 p.m. will be the next commissioner's regular meeting at 200 College Street, Room 326. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. We're going to go to closed session.